When my husband and I were dating, he was in residency and I was in Michigan visiting him. He had the rounds. So he takes me with him, puts me in a white coat. And he introduces me to Dr. Wong, which was really funny.
And Mr. Alexander talking about his level issue wanting to look at the QD other doctor instead of him.
Yes, yes, of course. Exactly.
So I just, I think.
Says it somewhere on the diploma.
No, I can't read Latin.
Latin?
Which is nice because I don't want to see the date when I graduate, how long ago that was. It's a good thing I can't figure out what it's known. Ah, look at this, yeah, look at this. Yeah, I told you. No, I said, I got to do, I said, no. No, no, I'm not gonna do that. I'll swear a minute and then this way you get there. If I swear, man, there's not inside.
My name is here. Unless you want to sit here. I just said my name was here. Not for now, but for now.
I think I'd get your, so.
Here.
You check out your gender. Yeah. Walking in the rain, it's not because, like, how long, never mind. Since I turned, so then all the people see and. This is the one, the case that I'm going to.
Yeah, so she mentioned.
I'm sorry, I just. We just have a lot of bad stuff.
Yeah. Then you open it up.
Same as that, but.
If I should pop up. But the only one I was sure.
So you can get done, it'll be your plan. Oh, yeah. Do you like John? Obviously, I, I know we got ones, very. Everybody, we have to shout it. We're, we're, like, I'm not a staff, Jack, Jack, they're getting this. Like, I'm more a person. You know, I mean, it's really good. I, I, although.
Sure.
Yeah. Go around with everything. Because I have conditions. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. She has a bank.
Well, then under the letter. There it is. Yeah, I would not want to.
Do you need a hit of the staff?
Yeah.
That's wrong with the chair.
Oh, I think.
I, I would think.
Your boss, he goes. Sounds fine. They're that.
Yeah.
Oh. Today's having a serious too. I happen to know.
Council adopted the point, just like any other governmental action, just like there's no ordinance.
On deliveries, you went over that very quickly. I wonder if you could explain in more detail. How particularly parcel deliveries will be made to the project and how the parcel, once delivered, will move within the project?
Yeah, I think that's better testimony for both our traffic engineer and our architect. There's some internal pieces of the building, all of that. I think you'll hear that as we go through the application scene.
As far as the loading dock is, and I'm just, again, maybe this is something that I brought up later. I'm assuming there'll be an overhead doors on that north side of that bump out. Will that allow vehicles to get inside the building?
That's correct.
Or they'll be able to get in?
Yes, and you'll see, you'll see what that looks like as we move through the application.
Right. Okay, and then one other question about this plant here on the south side between those two. Bumps in the building there, it shows grass. Will that actually be grass there or? But again, from looking at the parking plan, the lower level, that will be a leaf right there.
Yeah, I don't, I think the intention is that will be some under the, the, the grass there, so. This grass will be on top? Yeah, so that, that area, yeah. We're not intending to.
I didn't hear the last question, sorry.
So there will be grass on top of the.
Yeah, and there's, there's some elevations that we'll work through again with the architect. You'll be able to see that in true color and how it'll look from that side.
So i- if that's the case, and there will be grass in between those two.
One of them.
Bump outs in the building, you have a zero setback on one side and one foot four inch setback on the other side. Is there some plan to be able to maintain that grass area?
Yeah, I think it'll, I think it'll just be mowed. I don't think we have.
But you'll have to, you'll have to come on.
Yeah, there's, and I think as you see the elevations, you'll see there's an opportunity to trim that up from the inside of the garage as well, so we'll go through that.
Okay.
Are you filed the DOT?
Yes, and you lay that for me.
I'm sorry. We need to have a question finished and then an answer given. Core floor is probably gonna appreciate that as well. But, and everyone needs to hear both.
Okay.
So please, if anyone can cooperate that with ours. Well, I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
I asked if the DOT application has been filed.
It has been, yes.
Can we see a copy of?
Yes, and our traffic engineer will speak more to it.
Okay.
So John, I'm gonna withhold questions from the public. I've got about sixty more for the engineer. But I do want you to be able to introduce your traffic witness.
That's fine. All right.
I'm sorry.
Already forgotten if I swore in all of this last time, that's what I think. We're not a hundred percent sure on this way, and again, please raise your right hand. You swear to God or a friend that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do. Mr. Korak, can you please provide the board with a summary of your educational and professional background and license as you hope?
Of course. Again, for the record, my name is John Korak, last name spelled C O R A K. With Stonefield Engineering and Design, my office located at ninety-two Park Avenue in Rutherford, New Jersey. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I hold a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from the College of New Jersey. I'm an expert in the field of traffic and transportation engineering. I've prepared over two hundred traffic studies for land development applications. I've appeared before over ninety boards within the state and I serve as a board expert, board reviewer. And for our four municipalities in the state.
Well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Ms. Korak. You, your office prepared the traffic impact study that's before the board in conjunction with this application, is that correct?
That's correct.
I'll just turn the floor over to you to speak to your findings with respect to this project.
Of course, that, can you just confirm it's the September twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three traffic impact study? And that traffic study is dated September twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three, correct? And. Great, so as part of our traffic study, we do a comprehensive review of the site itself, the surrounding roadway network. Ultimately looking to assess the impacts of the proposed development. As it relates not only to vehicular traffic in and out of the site and at the adjacent traffic signals. But of course, the pedestrian realm and how it fits from the movement of people perspective. In this downtown saying, their village core, if you will, that this property resides on and has a lot of potential to become. So that existing condition today, several buildings on the site, a little bit tired and a large asphalt parking lot. We have two existing access points, one on Mount Arrie Road and one on Route two oh two. And so on Mount Arrie Road, where you're constrained is that because you're so close to this traffic signal. The existing access is frequently blocked by queued vehicles. And so making any sort of left turn movements in or out becomes problematic. And making even right turn movements in and out means you're going to have to wait. It's not so much a safety concern, but it is a timing concern, if you will. At the Route two oh two driveway that presently exists is shifted much more to the left. More about where the, the courtyard plaza is. And between the curvature of the roadway, both horizontal and vertical, so the curvature and the hill, the crest of the roadway. And of course, the buildings that are very close to the, the property line. What you've got at that driveway is a pretty substantial site distance issue, meaning if you're trying to leave that site. Looking toward the traffic signal, it is very difficult to see oncoming motors, especially coming from Mount Arrie Anderson Hill Road. That direction, right? So those vehicles traveling on two oh two, if you're trying to make that turnout today. It's somewhat of a Florida and Pratt. Yeah, it's, it's, you're, you're essentially. Trusting that in that little window that you can see no additional vehicle is going to come through. And it certainly doesn't hold up to any of the modern day site distance standards or guidelines that are, that are provided to us. By the American Association of State Highway Transportation Officials, ASHTO, which is also used by the NJ DOT and. Most engineering review agencies as well. So as it exists today. You know, a, a site development that, you know, from that vehicular perspective is a little bit lackluster. And then on a pedestrian perspective, especially in the fabric of the downtown core. The sidewalks and the equipment in the right of way. Essentially, the traffic signal equipment creates a condition where you really can't walk by without kind of tiptoeing around. A, a traffic signal pole, if you have a stroller or you're in a wheelchair, you simply can't get around some of the existing infrastructure. On that sidewalk area, it's about three feet wide in its narrowest point with the traffic signal pole sitting right there. It completely does not conform to ADA accessibility requirements, pro wagon, the like. And so that's a, it's a major constraint, especially in an area that is intended to be very walkable. Right, south of the railroad tracks, there is additional parking for the downtown. You simply come across the bridge. And then you're met with, you know, in a, in a penitent from a pedestrian standpoint, that's, it's not very positive, it's not very relevant. And so as part of this design, what we're looking to do is obviously conform in the redevelopment plan. And part of that performance with the redevelopment plan includes a number of benefits and attributes. That are related to improvement both vehicular and pedestrian mobilization and circulation around the property and the property itself. So the first component of it, starting with the vehicular, is locating. The vehicular access, those going to and from the parking area. On Route two oh two, because the turning movements on Mount Arrie are challenging to make anytime there's a queue. So I want to push it on the two oh two as far away from the traffic signal as possible. And what this does is it affords us much better sight lines. It affords us less impacts from any queues that are on two oh two, any, any lineup of cars. And it ultimately creates a safer condition, one where you can move vehicles more efficiently on and off the site itself. The second piece is by locating the loading to Mount Arrie Avenue, loaded generally being infrequent. And the way this loading area works is that essentially because those left turns to and from Mount Arrie are very difficult. Especially if you are using, you know, a, a larger van or a box truck, that, that, that's what we expect for this type of development. Essentially, the, the movement for the loading operation is you're coming up Mount Arrie. Heading northbound, essentially turn in, making a right turn in, pulling all the way up and then you back into. The, the loading dock area that's covered. And so when you want to leave, then you simply leave that loading dock area, pull out and essentially. Slide over to the left to make a right turn out of the site and continue on Mount Arrie and either up to, to Anderson Hill or on the Route two oh two. So the intent here is to make very simple maneuvers, right turning type maneuvers, not being obstructed by those, those queues. And locating this loading in an area that's away from a lot of the other pedestrian activity, the downtown activity. On Route two oh two and outside of some of the internal site maneuvers as well. As part of a traffic, yes?
We just said something, you said. Outside of the downside, downtown pedestrian activity, what makes you think pedestrian activity isn't right there for that loading?
Well, the, the main storefronts and businesses, what, you know, your, your travel. Yeah, the, the travel paths, they're all fronting Route two oh two.
Yours.
Right, but, but continuing on the corridor, it's, it's much more substantial on two oh two. And, and sure, across on Anderson Hill Road and off that square.
You're saying we're just not gonna have pedestrian activity on the Mount Arrie side of this?
That's not my testimony. My testimony is that it's the lesser pedestrian area. You have to locate. Your loading access on one of the two streets, and this is the preferred location based on that.
Now, you've chosen it, Alan Gabriel, and you've been allowed to put your loading area on one of the two speeds.
Correct.
And that's by ordinance, basically, by the agreement that was given, you were given permission to do this. It's not standard perversion. Your, the agreement has allowed you to consider putting the loading zone on Mount Arrie. Which normally be illegal.
The entrance to the loading zone. Is on Mount Arrie. There's no backing in from Mount Arrie. There's no maneuvering that's on Mount Arrie except a right turn in and a right turn out.
That doesn't matter. I'm just clarifying, that's all. How does that loading area conform to the county requirements?
In terms of driveway openings, things like that, it, I, I'm not one hundred percent sure on the, the curb line opening. It's possible that it needs a waiver, I'm not sure.
And the count also requires a sixty-six to right wide along Mount Arrie's dedication. For an easement for road lining, is that in the plan?
At, at present consideration, it does not appear to be enough.
Because this is a minor arterial accounting master plan. So they require an easement or a dedication thirty-three feet from center line.
Sure.
But that doesn't seem possible. With the, the bump out.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, Board Member Smol, can you speak a little louder, please?
That, that is not, it appears that that's not possible for new bump out along Mount Arrie. With the loading bump out.
Thirty-three foot from center line.
Whatever, it's either an easement or a dedication.
And that's something that we can discuss with the county. I think one of the considerations here is that bridge directly south of us. That would, would at least taper, you know, the extent that the county would look to widen this area in the future, but that's, that's only a discussion.
Being a place, it's a good idea, but a bridge being a place, so. Not.
It's something to discuss with the county. It's their master plan right away with.
Was it county? Have to say from there by?
Yes.
Is there been any response from the town?
I'm not sure.
Oh, I'm sorry, and I can't speak back there.
Yeah, who's speaking?
You know, if someone's testifying, we have to know who they are or what they thought.
We do not have a formal review letter from the county.
You said that when trucks left the loading zone. They would make a right turn, need to go off Anderson or not two oh two. Are trucks permitted on Anderson Road? Right now, a truck or a bus or inside coming down two oh two that wants to go up. Mount Arrie Road's gotta go down Clermont.
Trucks cannot go up Anderson Road, that was correct.
Right, so it could, doesn't have to be a truck necessarily, could be one of those Amazon Sprinter vans, could be the smaller delivery type vehicles, but.
Right, but what you do is you have a box truck, which I don't think can go up Anderson, can it?
It's gonna be by weight. I think it's five tons, yeah.
So how big is box truck?
Yeah, an empty might hit five tons a smaller.
What's that truck gonna do if you want to? What's that truck gonna do if you want to? You have to make a left turn on two oh two.
That's a left or a right.
Yeah, he needs to go up Anderson, he's gonna go ahead, take a left turn on two oh two south. He's gonna have, he's gonna happen then.
One one in time, board members, please.
Presses over the traffic, of course, the traffic.
Well, you've got to get it to the left turn.
Yes, exactly.
Or make a right turn.
Well, if it goes the right way, he can't make another turn until it gets out to uh.
I have a question about the the trucks themselves. You had mentioned a van or a box truck.
Correct.
Go in and out of there. Uh maybe I'm getting a little ahead of myself, but you have some of the units of three bedroom units. What kind of of moving van in and out? Is that the only place where there would be accessibility for vans or trucks? And if you have a three bedroom apartment, you've got to have more than a box truck. So you have to count have you?
Uh so the, this area is the area for the loading, the move in and move out. Um three bedroom apartments would utilize larger trucks, but that can be a larger sized box truck. It doesn't have to be. An articulated tractor trailer. Uh there are uh U-Haul type trucks that that are. Uh you know, large enough to accommodate and move a three bedroom unit. You know, one bedroom is going to be a smaller truck typically. Uh but they they do, those box trucks do exist and and would be the kind of move in, move out vehicle uh that'd be specified here.
So that that would fit, that wouldn't fit underneath, that would just be the outdoor area?
No, the the underneath would have the clearance for trucks as well. Yeah, yeah, it's it's the fourteen foot clearance.
And and all that, I would just stipulate, I think it may may have said it on the eighth, uh all the residential move ins, move outs. They're all managed and controlled or would be managed and controlled by building ownership, so it's not a, it's not a free for all. We have multiple.
I'm just talking about the space itself.
Yep.
What are the uh, what are the number of deliveries that you viewed in your model? Two. Describe all of the different types of deliveries you mentioned. One, there's the post office, there's Amazon, there's FedEx, there's UPS, there's DHL, there's Uber. Which may be different, Lyft, Taxi, you know, all the other types of deliveries. Um I don't know if you're expecting Grubhub or DoorDash to do deliveries there. Uh liquoriers, groceries, pharmacies, what, I guess it's what kind of deliveries do you expect to be done? And I asked you this before, I'm sorry. There there's lots, deliveries is a big, a big cloud of stuff. I'm wondering what. Quantity of deliveries we use in your traffic assessment of that loading facility. And I I appreciate the move in, move out would be scheduled by. What did you use?
Right, so so the move in, move out is the one component of it, and and the once the the building is leased up, that's a free minor amount, right? Your your. Your leases are typically leased a year and you hope for renewals because that keeps the residents in the unit longer. Um it keeps, you know, the rent coming in. Um the other deliveries we'd expect there are mostly related to the retail components. Um you know, related to deliveries for those retail pieces and any, I would guess, box truck deliveries of the residential, so. So what I would expect to be able to use some of the parking areas, the internal circulation. Would be those passenger vehicle type deliveries, DoorDash, Uber Eats, your pickups for Uber. Um you know, those types of. You know, residential type deliveries can utilize that those areas on site where the circulation is open and available. Um instead of mixing that type of use uh in a, in a loading corridor that that predominantly serves the box trucks.
Yeah, you brought a great point. There's the retail um replenishment that I I left off my list before you had.
How many delivery trucks do you see arriving? What what was your uh assumptions being frequency of which delivery trucks making the deliveries to apartments? Would be during the uh. Well, buildings during the daytime.
Yeah, so over the course of the typical day, you might see um you know, two to three box truck type. There's the smaller box trucks that the FedEx uh UPS are delivering with. Um. You know, Am- Amazon may have a little bit more frequency, but when you're delivering to apartment buildings. Um you're able to essentially put more packages in for more units and handle the deliveries. Um you know, at a at a more singular time than than spreading out numerous trucks throughout the day.
What what was the number of trucks you expected to arrive every day in your model this?
So it was for the residential portion, it was two to three trucks? Two to three.
I'm trying to hear, can't hear you. It should defer answering that question then.
We can, we can revisit that, certainly.
Yeah, I I mean, I get more than that, just one house, you know, um five deliveries a day, so. And you got mail, you know, that's that's a separate delivery.
I'm talking, I'm talking the box trucks, the larger trucks, you know, when we're talking about the the Amazon Sprinter vans, the mail, those are additional, additional components of it. We're asking about the truck delivery.
And the size of the truck, like the smaller box truck is thirty feet.
Now, the the smaller ones are more like twenty-three feet.
Well, I mean, the, for like the move in.
Sure.
Then there's the discussion of the larger box truck, which is forty feet. Have you plotted them? I saw a plot of a thirty foot truck. Will we down the forty foot truck?
At this point, I haven't plotted the forty, uh have plotted the thirty though. So we're willing to make sure that forty can be accommodated.
Okay, and the expectation would have been thirty, in in defense that. That loading zones in our town are supposed to be thirty feet uh capable of supporting those trucks and so you're saying. In addition to that, you'll plot out a forty foot.
Of course, correct.
So when a truck arrives and when we have done profit alive, where does it go? Does it go into that thirty uh? So that thirty goes uh where we don't?
It would likely be in the outdoor loading zone, understanding how they they typically aren't going to enter buildings.
Now, when the second truck comes at the same time, where would it go?
It it'd likely be in that area as well.
Does it have room for the two trucks to be there at the same time?
The two could stage. It might take a little bit of uh jostling to to get the second one out. But but yes, you could fit, you could park two in that same.
Okay, so now now the guy's in the loading zone and he takes his packages out. How the packages move to the building?
I would defer that to the architect. Good question, or that's the architect.
Can we just back up and just clarify this? I didn't know if I I heard you correctly. If if. Um let's go back to Uber or that kind of a pickup, a taxi, since. Would that come down in the parking area or at that same pickup location where your your delivery is on?
It would not, it would certainly not be in the pickup delivery location. That that the, you know, Uber or taxi pickup is not likely staging there. Typically, what you see with with any Uber pickup is they stage on the street. Um if you have something like a the a a grocery delivery service, you have like the uh. The shoppers that do it for you in their own personal vehicle, they're probably coming into um you know, the the parking lot area. Uh the Uber uh can also be directed by that the person ordering it. If they're not ready, hey, don't wait on two oh two. Come and park in the lot and I'll.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. If I can't hear, probably other people, members of the public can't either. So in fairness to the members of the public, if. It it could be a little quieter and the board members can speak a little louder.
Uh so I'm just trying to figure if if we've got, say, a uh an Uber taxi and and they've been called from one of the units. Now, that that vehicle actually comes down that driveway that goes into the underground parking. Is that what you're saying?
They could. It's it's a shared um. Parking area that's open to the public because some of it is retail, some of it is residential. And so those retail spaces being open to the public are an opportunity. Really, in a case where, and and this this happens from time to time, you order the Uber, they arrive quicker than you think they will. Um and that that you can basically call or text the Uber and direct them either to your pickup location or where to stage. It it's, you know, the 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 app technology there exists for that type of communication.
Yes, so they can't, they can't stage on even not on a level from out here.
Right.
So are you stipulating that the fact that, I guess you used the word, um typically. Residential vehicles will not stage or pick up in the loading zone and will only be do so in the.
I mean, that our intent is not to have them stage on Route two oh two.
But are you stipulating that they'll be managed by the management company? Does that won't happen?
That's correct.
I I think the other thing you said, you said someone else should be answering these questions, right? That that is. That in terms of the 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 those types of vehicles and deliveries and stuff like, not about the loading zone, it's somewhere else.
Those related to how the packages move through the building.
And they need to answer, whoever, those witnesses need to answer those questions.
Wait, I'm sorry, can you, how can you say that?
When when an Uber comes to come down brightly, will there be a stop there that for them to stand? Uh or um that it doesn't block access to the uh, you have like a a standings zone in the garage? So that he doesn't block garage up on the standing way where it's riding come down?
No, they usually usually use a parking space.
Are, is your spoke supposed to be on current circulation?
Well, circulation is is part of it, yeah.
On current circulation.
Yeah, yeah, on on site.
Question to ask is, okay.
Yeah, vehicular circulation on site, certainly.
I I do know Mr. Corrigan actually has a a lot more direct testimony because he's gonna speak to trip generation and so forth. So we can just, they will roll through that and we'll come back to, I'll say some of these things, if that's okay.
Great, so getting back into the direct testimony, laying out the reasoning for the driveway locations. We actually need to do then the analysis of the impact related to the site itself. To understand, uh are there, you know, further improvements that need to be made um related to vehicular impact, pedestrian impact and the like? And so we do uh as part of our traffic studies, we conduct traffic counts. Uh we conduct those counts during uh the typical weekday morning, weekday evening, and Saturday midday peak periods. Uh those periods generally represent uh the 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 peak volumes on the roadway network. And when your traffic is most likely to be affected by a development like this. So we conduct those counts, narrow them down to a peak hour for the analysis purposes. How traffic engineers conduct these traffic studies, they look at a peak hour analysis. Uh and then we evaluate the levels of service at that intersection itself. We then move into a future year condition um where we essentially grow the traffic. We count for a little bit of background traffic growth. Whether that's just from overall population growth, um growth from other developments in the area, which we've included one. Um and uh and generally speaking, it was a background growth factor that DOT recommends as a conservative measure to increase. Out of the volume, you know, for a, you know, for a future year growth. The next component is to add in the actual traffic generated by the site. You know, the way we do that is with the trip generation manual published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. But this manual is industry standard. Uh it provides uh trip forecasts for a number of different land uses. Here we have both residential component and the retail component. And we also have proximity involved through the train station. We have a walkability. We have a little bit of interconnected play between. Residents using the retail uses. Um and and so what that ultimately shakes out to is for the sixty-six units. Um a total of sixty, oh, I'm sorry, sixty-eight units, a total of forty-seven peak hour trips in the morning peak hour. Uh fifty-two peak hour trips in the evening peak hour and fifty-eight peak hour trips. In the Saturday midday peak hour. So you see the retail going up a little bit there um on that, on that Saturday period. And that's also um pretty consistent with the roadway volumes um in terms of. Uh how they scale both morning, evening, and then Saturday being one of the higher um, you know, roadway volume conditions uh throughout the week.
And just when you're, when you're speaking to trips, well, Mr. Cora, that. An in is a trip, and an out is a trip, correct?
Correct.
So we're not, it's not double.
Correct, and and so in the in the uh morning, you'll see a higher rate of out trips as more people are leaving to go to work. Um you know, it's a similar phenomenon the other way in the evening where you have more people coming in. Um returning from work, and then Saturday is a pretty even split. Uh as people are running errands, visiting retail and like, where it's a it's a broader distribution throughout the day and and get. A closer to fifty fifty.
Is it based on um? Parking spaces or residence or what?
It's based on unit count for the residential, and it's based on uh floor area for the uh retail.
So Gary, can I ask you a clarifying question based on something that was just been applied to with your permission? Uh because you gave numbers of, Mr. Cora, uh forty-seven weekday. Morning peak hour, fifty-two weekday evening peak hour, and Saturday midday peak hour. Uh for the benefit of the public, a couple of things. Number one, can you give what those peak hours are?
Yeah, of course. So this peak hours uh occurred from seven thirty AM to eight thirty AM.
That's weekday morning?
Weekday morning. Weekday evening is five to six. Saturday midday was eleven fifteen to twelve fifteen, based on the actual volumes that were counted.
And the numbers you gave, forty-seven, fifty-two, fifty-eight, those were on page nine, your adjusted. Uh uh post, the post trip generation?
Correct, correct.
And those adjustments were from page eight, they included something called internal capture. Trip reduction and something called LUC, I'm assuming that's land use code.
Yeah.
Eight twenty-two, thirty-four percent, twenty-six percent. Pass by trip reduction.
Right.
So those are not. What I would call gross uh proposed trip generation numbers, those are net for these adjustments that you made. Is that correct?
That's correct, and.
Would it be appropriate, I think the the chair of commission might be appropriate to explain for the benefit of the public. Those adjustments because I want the public to be aware of the fact that you've made adjustments.
Sure.
These uh numbers that are based, as I understand it, on these uh codes. Uh uh on the ITE, which uh letter P edition manual.
Right, so with, so the the first component of those adjustments, the internal capture, um you have essentially residential. Uh use on the same site as uh retail use. And so some of those retail trips are oftentimes generated from the residential unit, so there's a, you know, a modest reduction. Because you don't have to leave the site, you basically just walk over to that use.
So are you in in essence saying some of the customers are gonna come from the sixty-eight units themselves, so therefore some numbers would be less?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, uh and and I guess you have a a column in there that that doing certain periods of time. Okay.
Yeah, we don't forecast it much for the morning. It's more that evening and Saturday peak hour conditions. Um same thing on the, on the pass by trips. Those are for, you know, retail trips that are uh already on the roadway network. Retail frequently captures traffic volumes from the roadway network. And so those volumes are routed from the roadway in and out of the driveway for the analysis. They don't actually constitute new vehicles on the road itself. Um what's not captured in here is uh reductions related to. Transit use, where we would expect, you know, given the proximity to the train station, the number of residents in particular. To forego driving to work and instead take the train to work, and that would reduce peak hour traffic volumes, especially on the uh the morning and the evening period.
But I don't, New Jersey train can't figure that one out, so.
But I I have a question.
Yeah.
But you, when you did the projections, you for mid-rise, you use the, you didn't take advantage of the. Over the adjustment. The calculation, the land use code that you used, it, because there is a land use code that says you're training your public transportation. You need to do that.
I would need to double check. It it may incorporate that. It it's not specified in here. I I need to confirm that.
Well, I checked it.
That's great. I appreciate that.
And it doesn't, the land use code that you used was not one within a half mile of the train station.
Right, and so the ones within a half mile obviously incorporate that that transit.
In reality, they're about the same.
So how are you suggesting that their estimates are higher than what they could be?
No, you're suggesting, or you think the other way? If you if you use the, if you use the category within a half mile of a, of a train station. It ends up being about the same number because the 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 environment, the number of studies that were done for the train station. Category were were a lot different. There were like two hundred studies done for the mid-rise.
Category were a lot different, there were like two hundred studies done for the mid rise and only like half a dozen done for within. Certain distance of half mile of train.
Right.
So it ends up being the same.
Do you sync them?
Yes.
Uh, what version?
Um, this one was done in sync for eleven and twelve was published recently.
Right, I just would suggest that you do that, since I didn't twelve that too, there was a fraction of the right turn computations.
Yeah, of course.
So.
Yeah, happy to uh, to take a look at that in uh, in the latest version of Sycro, which of course wasn't published when the study was.
Yeah.
Prepared, but happy to look at that. So moving on with, um, you know.
So you got you took no credits? Mass transit being in proximity uh.
I'm sorry, can you come on, sorry.
He put a different credit. Instead of the mass transit, right, you took the one for the internal shopping.
Yeah.
So you're gonna put, how so, okay, I just wanna, I just want to question, when you back clarify this.
Correct.
Well, can we talk about that? The internal trips?
Sure.
You reduced the trip generation by about twenty two percent. Based on the internal trip. So you you think that there is a judgment decision based on the IT. Um, your generation handbook third edition quote, but nine thousand square feet broken up into. What pieces, sections that are twenty two hundred in the Palmer building? And then, you know, what, three thousand in each of the, less than three thousand in each of the new buildings. They're gonna draw twenty percent of the traffic from the residential, I mean, that's a, that's just, in my opinion, that's. A little concerned, too concerned.
Sure, so again, that that those numbers are from that trip generation handbook. They are also adopted by the NJ DOT, they use the same uh, internal capture percentages, we've done the supportive industry standards. And and that level of reduction on a on a mixed use project, I I don't think is is uncharacteristic. I also don't think it's uncharacteristic to say that um, some of those trips would be captured by people already walking on the street in part of the downtown. And urban infill type uh, trip reduction as well, now there's a lot of different. Analysis that can be done to essentially correct the data from a standalone suburban development, totally car centric. To a development like this, we're in a downtown core.
Why did you use that?
Because we felt the internal capture was appropriate.
So I guess I'm gonna ask a question different, is it your assessment that the trip count that you're, is really a maximum trip count? Is that your testimony based on the fact you didn't take several of the. Credits, I think was the word the judge used.
We took some of the credits, not all of the credits, we could have taken no credits, and that would be the maximum.
Well, I'd like to, if you could present, there's a, there's a method of calculating, because you calculated it based on the methodology. For the internal trips, could you present that? Could you bring that back the next week?
Yeah, yeah, of course. Yeah, there there's the standard, um. You know, spreadsheets that that help calculate, but yeah, we can provide that.
If it's possible, um, with no credits, would that you can testify that would be the maximum?
That you can find that on table two, page eight.
Okay.
Or is a, yeah, the 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 residential stays at forty seven, the uh. The Saturday and, sorry, not the residential stays at forty seven, the morning stays at forty seven.
Okay.
The Saturday and PM. We just get these are both at eighty eight peak hour trips.
So why and how would that have been?
Well, I still.
I question the calculation, the the internal trips.
I think it it may be a benefit to the board if we were, um, you know, also able to just look at the analysis without any of the reductions. Right, instead of trying to.
Yeah, that's, again, that might be the more practical way.
Yeah, sensitivity analysis, but we we would expect reductions, but we're happy to look at it without.
Yeah, I think that's the statement is right, and the expectation is that there are reductions based on where it's located, how it's located. But I think understanding the maximum is an important thing.
Yeah, of course.
Can you describe how in the guidebook that you referenced traffic engineers, how they have in the last year or two? Um, adjusted for the societal changes that have swerved people to. This type of deliver the delivery orientation for these vans and movers and so forth. What did they got in their manual that describes the factors that need to be considered as opposed to residences and units and so forth?
Right, so the, you know, the the trip generation rates are still going to be based on either units, bedroom count. Uh, a development type plan.
Lieutenant trip rate essentially.
Essentially for residential use now.
Gotcha.
Um, you know, with recent publications of the trip generation manual, parking generation manual. Um, there is, is a constant, um, you know. Every few years now, they're making these updates with with new data and they're essentially eliminating the old data from, um. You know, from the reference guide and you can further filter out that data. Uh, but in terms of the way the way that they categorize the data included in the trip generation manual. It essentially gets separated out. Cars and trucks. And there's no real distinction made about delivery services and the like within that trip generation.
Sounds. Well, sounds like a problem.
And and certainly deliveries, uh, you know, they they can happen in the peak hour, they oftentimes happen outside of there as well.
I I understand, you're picking peak, it's true, the methodology is picking peak hours and it's not like, oh, well. From seven thirty, eight thirty, that's when all my deliveries are gonna happen, including pizza that I need delivered. But um, but nonetheless, it seems to me that there actually needs to be explicit. Discussion that especially in suburban or open, you know, settings that that these. And I know it's new and there's there are not a lot of studies, but there are a lot of trips being generated by deliveries and pickups and so forth, so.
Mr. Chair, can I ask you a dovetailing question on that, the concern expressed and.
The cons.
What the the issue that you're.
The issue is that.
Oh, no, I know, I understand the issue, so may I ask a question or two?
Oh, yeah, okay.
There's some, it's it, I'm curious. The the uh, you for traffic, you're using ITE uh, eleventh generation?
Correct.
Or eleventh edition?
Second.
Uh, the the the, um, when did that come out?
It's that published in the, I think, the past two years.
I don't know.
I'm 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 trying to recall. I might have a piece of documentation that tells me. I think within the past two years, but I don't need to confirm.
Safe to assume any, any, any studies that were incorporated in the ITE. Uh, uh, eleventh edition, uh, if it came out, say, two years ago, uh, the studies preceding. Uh, the publication.
Of course.
Okay, the the uh, and do we know when the ITE fifth generation, is that the ITE fifth generation for parking?
Oh, we're at the sixth now.
Uh. Uh, do we know when that one came out?
It was last year, it was a recent one. Second, second half last year.
Did the, um, same thing though, right, uh, uh, any, any, any truck, any study. And is incorporated in the publication of each edition, would have the preceding publication of each edition, correct?
To my knowledge, but. The the ITE, both both trip generation and parking generation are now published online. So it is possible that they have updated, provided updated studies, so I'll write, say, it has to precede it, but but.
Did you use the one online or did you use the published?
The one online.
Okay, so.
We call it half the time of, you know, the December twenty sixth date.
Do you know offhand whether they actually add uh, uh, new studies on before publishing the next edition?
I've seen them revise land use codes, I've seen them revise the way the studies are delegated, um, without releasing a new edition. Um, I don't know offhand if these particular uses that were used had had that happen.
Do we know whether or not, uh, uh, if we know when, from what, uh, range of time? Uh, the studies were, uh, that appear in the ITE eleven edition for for trip generation, the ITE fifth. Edition for parking, sixth, sixth, I keep doing it, uh, sixth edition, uh, uh, do we know the range of time? Uh, from when the respective editions of. Studies for that.
Are you asking time of day or year, or like decade or both?
Range of time between, uh, meaning the year.
Um, I I don't know offhand, but that information can be obtained.
Do they keep old ones or do they, do each edition, do they just use a whole different set of? Uh, uh, studies, uh, that were subsequent to the prior edition, uh, but precede the current edition?
Now, they do use some studies that were in prior editions, they determine. Uh, they look at the data and determine if there's a need to cut off, um, old data. For example, a bank land use has had a substantial difference in traffic generation, parking generation. Due to technology changes, the way that people bank direct deposit probably being the biggest. Piece of it where you no longer have to go to the bank to cash a check, um, so.
The ITE make, the the people who do it, they 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 make those decisions as to what to keep, what not to keep.
Yes.
With some sort of basis for doing.
Engineering judgment, yes.
Something to add to that.
Um, thank you, nothing further.
Because I, I was part, I submitted material to the IT as it related to convenience stores or gasoline. Because they were using old. And I presented the material and then I spoke, so they assigned an editor to the, to the manual. And he takes the, it was a mail, he takes, he took the material on the last edition. And picking, worked on developing standards for the new edition. Comes from traffic engineers in the field submitting to the IT, then they combine that.
I guess it's safe to say, at least now, we don't quite know the range of years when the respective, uh, uh. Uh, studies were done for use with respect to, uh, each of these mid rise land use and the, uh. Uh, retail, strip retail plaza land use that came out of the eleventh edition, and to know that. For the most part, not entirely, they preceded a year ago.
Just correct, but we can take that information.
Okay, well, those two uses are new with the, are new uses in the eleventh edition. Well, the tenth edition didn't have those.
I think the mid rise was still in the tenth, but the the strip retail.
Strip retail is not, and New Jersey DOT doesn't recognize the eleventh edition.
Correct, um, there, last I talked to DOT about that, they are, uh.
Behind the times.
They're they're too busy to even contemplate looking at the rates just with the.
So, yeah, or.
With the purpose of.
Maybe the DOT still uses the tenth edition.
Yeah, the mid rise are in the tenth, the strip retail is in the eleven, but whatever. I I'm, what I'm, I don't wanna speculate, but if we look back at some of the data for that strip retail use. Some of it may precede the eleventh edition because it likely came from the old shopping center land use. Or especially retail land use, previous land uses that, uh, were in in earlier editions of the code.
And that's where the editor of the, of the manual comes in.
I guess the bottom line is that the board sort of desires, since you said you could provide that information or get that information. The board can decide whether it wants you to do so or ask you to do so or not, so I was just curious, I'm done, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Um, and I know you have to get to the impact of these numbers, but I wanted to know if you included in the model. The pedestrian crossing at the northeast corner of the property. Um, I know it's not on your property, but if, did, did you, does the model tell you you have to do anything if there's a pedestrian crossing? For those right turns?
No, we we did not model, um, you know, those those pedestrians at that crossing, no. The the counts were limited at the traffic signal, they bounced through, so we don't have those.
Oh, it's really, that is conventional stuff, it's all about trips and a traffic signal.
Whoa.
As opposed to turning. Which is fine, okay, yeah, that has to be figured out.
Including pedestrians at the signal as well.
Right, right, which.
Of course.
Must have been from modeling that. Um, but what about turning in and out of the driveway? Isn't that part of the, I mean, concern? Is the trips in and out of the driveway?
Yes.
And the traffic there?
Yes.
Not at the signal.
The the particular, um, components of of that review.
Yeah.
Are a part of this traffic study, I think you, I think you make a great point about the pedestrian crossing.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I'm just saying, here's the part of the review where you say, and this is where it's fucking just about our drive. And people turning in and out to go onto two oh two.
Yes.
On a route, so.
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay, is it still a plan maybe you assume that they're making both left and right out of the parking, written apartment?
That is, that is the current plan? Yes, it it does fall to NJ DOT jurisdiction. Uh, but but that is, that is the plan.
What? What type of permit did you apply?
Major access permit.
So didn't submit any traffic studies?
No. Okay, so continuing on, once we've calculated that trip generation, um, what we then do is route it to and from the subject site. Though that vehicular trip generation is of course using, predominantly using that, uh, you know, the main driveway along Route two oh two. Um, we route the left turns, right turns coming in and out of the site and then also continue those routings over to the traffic signal itself. And as we look then in our level of service analysis that we conduct from existing to no build to build. We look for degradations, we look for impacts related to, uh, basically in between one analysis and the next. And what the analysis shows is that the additional traffic created by the driveways at the traffic signal. Do not have a material impact on level of service, and what I mean by material impact, in this case, we're looking at. Delay increases that are, um, very much consistent, generally speaking, less than a one second increase as a result of. Um, additional traffic volumes, uh, and and to that end, we, that's generally speaking imperceptible to motorists. Who are traveling through the corridor on a, on a daily basis. Um, at the driveway also, we conduct the level of service analysis. Uh, those turning movements operate at acceptable levels of service, they meet NJ DOT's criteria for, um. Level of service thresholds and and with that, not concluded any sort of adverse impact with those driveway movements either. There's no substantial queuing, the sightlines are vastly improved and the the traffic impact. Uh, there just does not have any negative impact on Route two oh two.
See, I mean, interesting thing, I just wanna clarify, so you said that with the loadings on it, that would.
Yeah.
There was negligible change, I was under the, I guess, naive assumption that by removing a exit to the area. That that would improve that situation, is that not your assessment?
No, the assessment at the, at the traffic signal was negligible change. And what we didn't do as part of this analysis was count the existing driveways and subtract off that volume. It's it's as if that volume is still, you know, the volume that goes through the signal today, if it's, even it's going to the site. It's as if it's still there in the analysis. Just just a little bit extra volume that in theory would would be directed elsewhere and exist.
So I mean, so you, the assessment was no change either, I'm driving north up the hill, turning left into the existing line. Or in out of the existing line, going either right or left. That was not.
The 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 no change in level of service is at the traffic signal.
Yeah.
And the levels of service at the driveway.
Yeah.
Operate at acceptable conditions for traffic engineering.
There's a statistic that I think you have probably that might be helpful, and that is at the driveway. In the peak hours, what's the existing trip count at that spot? I mean, you're saying.
That information I do not have, like for the existing site.
Well, then, you have to have it.
Well, I have the volume on the road.
That's what I meant, I don't, no, I'm sorry, I said it wrong, I I didn't mean the internally, you know, the volume in the driveway, I meant on the road itself. You know, you're saying there are forty seven in one case, you know, forty seven in the inner house, you know, that are additional. Because you're not taking a credit training and, okay, how many cars pass by that spot in both directions? spot in both directions? I mean, you know, they both count, right?
Right.
At that hour. You know, so forty seven is what, you know, is, did three hundred cars pass by it? How many cars in that hour passed by that?
Sure.
The, the front of that driveway.
Sure, I understand the question now. So um during the morning, um headed on, I'll do this by call two oh two north, which is eastbound.
Right.
Um, in the morning, it's five seventy nine, um, two oh two north, four eighty five, two oh two south.
Sorry, can I get the last one, four eighty five?
Four eighty five. Uh, two oh two.
Particular page in your pen?
It is.
And you give the board and everyone else the benefit of the page now.
It's on page A seventeen.
Did you say A seventeen?
A seventeen.
A is an apple.
Okay, and then uh in the evening, when it's fifty two incremental, but what's, what's the thing number of it?
With the five thirteen north? Seven oh seven south.
So essentially a five to ten percent change. I was asking about finding this, so approximately a five to ten percent change in volume.
Correct, correct, and also a directional shift.
Yes.
Where you're now more headed south than either. And then that Saturday time period uh actually came out dead even during our counts at five ninety seven and five ninety seven.
Five seventy seven.
No, the, the bracket is.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. Different, that traffic engineers write it out differently. The bracket is the Saturday.
So all the counts that were uh taken into, all, all the vehicle accounts taken into uh the study are just on two oh two past driveway. Not taken into account the number of vehicles passing uh Mount Airy Road as the uh
Oh, and Doc? Now, if you were to that, if you, um, if you go to that page on A seventeen, we have the, the full complement of volumes at the traffic signal. So headed up on Mount Airy and then uh you could add in the lefts, rights and threes coming down to the top as well.
Should you bring up a coin? So are, are they counts at the front of the driveway or are they traffic signal down there?
At the signal.
So how do you handle the, did it count the southbound two oh two traffic, then chairs to the right up to there is a signal there, I mean, as an ancillary signal, but does it include that?
It does, it, it does. So um the, the figure itself just looks like a, a T cross. But you'll notice that the Morris Town Road, uh, the Route two oh two has the right turn volume. It's because we did count that all cut square, right, you know, the, the right turn is going.
I'm sorry.
We did count the all cut square.
Right.
Volumes headed um up Anderson Hill. That do not. Good question.
Uh, 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 sorry, I haven't asked you more time. The numbers that you're providing, the forty to sixty, I'm giving the range, it's starting to be the increase in volume does not account for, actually is not including, the volume that's currently coming in and out of that lot.
Correct.
So it's, so it may not be a net positive of forty to sixty. It may be somewhere in the middle because there's currently volume that's going in and out that you're not accounted for.
Could, yeah, it could be twenty to forty, it could be, yeah, you know, thirty five to fifty. Depending on.
Question, why was the building empty? Was the building empty when you did your counts?
I, I'm not sure. That's what we, yeah.
Same thing is not good, no. And I'm not to take the crown.
Yeah, so the same thing, I think, but
Yeah, I think the bigger question is the one about what about deliveries? It doesn't seem to me that the methodology hasn't been updated to handle the societal changes of deliveries as they um as they relate to this particular um uh, project where we do anticipate a lot of delivery activity, so. But you could try to find out anything about, I think we already knew that.
Yeah, but the point, the point is well taken.
Find out about the delivery traffic.
Of course.
Uh, going back to your discussion with the traffic counts, did you look at other traffic counts in the area?
We did look at D O T data in the area. Um, the the, the A T Rs that uh that I was able to find, this one further to the, to the east uh by the Chop Right, it's more than ten years old. I don't really find that to be reliable. Um, there's another one up Anderson Hill Road that's a little bit closer. That's from twenty nineteen. Um, and, and our volumes were higher than those volumes, whether that's you know, it's not an apples to apples comparison because it's a little bit further away, but um, you know, we, we didn't find any any A T R, any, any counts from D O T that uh, you know, necessitated an adjustment on our part.
Well, I looked at the, that, this is like eleven years old, the count in front of the shop.
The twenty eleven count, yeah.
And I, the um, in the, in the morning, the counts were about thirty, eleven years ago, the counts were thirty three percent higher.
Hmm.
And in the P M, the counts were about ten percent higher.
I, I can't speculate, I can't speculate on thirteen, you know, what the, the traffic patterns are thirteen years ago. I, I don't know that it's.
The other suggestion I have is you're from more, I think it was T V Bank, did a traffic study for that.
Hmm.
Maybe you want to check those. That was about five years.
Okay.
So how you're, you're stating that the traffic was more traffic thirteen years ago than there is now? There's, there was more traffic thirteen years ago than is, than was counted here.
More traffic in front of Shop Right than at this intersection.
Shop Right, yeah.
Than thirteen years ago.
Um, there's, and you may get to this, so maybe I'll just say that, but there, there is another aspect about um congestion.
True.
And, and it's like a rating, there's like a rating system, like this intersection has got a congestion rating or or
Level of service, yeah.
Level of service, is that in?
Yes.
That, so.
Yeah.
And one of the reasons congestion is important, if you're like heavily congested, like I'm you, another five percent is way over the cliff, you know, it's, well, actually it's almost five percent, but if you're already at a hundred percent or terrible and you add it, it creates a problem. Conversely, if you're not congested at all and you're put in five percent no deal.
Right.
What did you find as the congestion situation in the third, the centers? And did, was there any way to get in a congestion assessment at the driveway? It's south.
Right, so I'll start with more of an explanation of level of service.
Okay.
So we can uh, you know, make sure that we're all working with the main parameters here. Or level of service, it's a, it's a measure, um, you know, of the, the volume capacity on the roadway network measure of delay, and it rates from level service A to F. But not unlike a, uh, you know, a report card where you're shooting for all As and maybe a few Bs, uh, traffic engineers, we design for level of service C and D. And that way, we're not overbuilding our roadways, right? We're not widening uselessly, um, but we're also not inundating, you know, designing toward the E and F where, you know, that, that is a congestion state. Um, and so this intersection and overall, when you uh look at all of the movements going through the intersection operates in level service C. And C.
C.
C isn't catch. Um, and we continue to operate at that level of service uh with the additional traffic um for this project. Now, at the driveway, I would break it down. Um, and we're, we're really looking at the movements out of the driveway because those are the ones that experience delay. The turning movements in, the right turn is essentially no delay and the left turn is simply a wait for a gap. Uh, but the turning movements out operate uh in the morning at that level of service C and, and the evening and Saturday at level of service D as a dunk. So those are still in that acceptable level of service range. D O T for driveways allows you to go up to level of service E. Uh, in this case, we're, we're not at that, that level of service on the roadway network.
But that's with the lower models.
Correct, so we, we can take a look at it.
So you said the intersection of the traffic light is C?
Yes.
Which is, I, moving your, um, that is, that's twenty second delay?
Or the range.
Twenty second to thirty five, I think.
Correct.
Um, I have to say that anybody whose flight could come down Mount Airy in the afternoon, especially about, not when you, uh time you use, but you know, school outside, unfortunately, for that. They'll wait a lot longer than uh thirty, uh, twenty to thirty five seconds to get to that intersection.
Yeah, the, the.
That, that traffic is often backed up all the way up towards uh Prospect Street and
Yeah, so there, there's two factors there. One, it's of course the school dismissal, crossing guards that play uh a little bit different role and, you know, protecting pedestrian safety as opposed to vehicular throughput. Two, the Mount Airy and Anderson Hill approaches are not prioritized by D O T. So those in our peak hours, right, now with the crossing guards, um, you know, field with school dismissal. But those approaches are at level service B, whereas Route two oh two is at a B as a four. So D O T on the signal prioritizes their corridors. Uh, and so you end up with, uh, you know, an overall C, but side streets that do a little bit worse and a main line that does a little bit better.
In the afternoon, coming down two oh two, going that's south on two oh two.
Yeah.
Two oh two south.
Southwest, never again. Yeah, uh, if you come out, if you're coming down that section, you can be delayed all the way back up to where uh, the old Kings were.
Hmm.
And sit, sit there in traffic. And what, you know, one of the things that drives people to go all colony in order to that intersection. But it, it's hard for me to believe that uh at, in times that are actual peak times, the level of service at on uh two oh two, uh, at that is, is a C or a D. I'd wait minutes, five, ten minutes, not ten, but five minutes to get through that intersection.
And, and there's certain times where that can be the experience. There's other times where it's a much better progression. Again, it, it is an average and it's the, the analysis based on this degree.
What's really difficult for people
Hmm.
is when it's not at the average, when it's at the peak and, and the razor, the greatest.
Of course.
If you added a, if you add a couple more seconds to a, um, uh, D or E, it becomes really annoying to get through that intersection.
Hmm, of course.
There, there's another. Well, when I, I took a quick look at your calculations, that you look at the signal times, there's a, that all red for pedestrians.
Hmm.
So then all, all four approaches go red when somebody pushes one.
Right, correct.
Which is not in your calculation. I think that's the difference for why it just falls over the edge of the capacity. But your, your model, who can, who can?
We can examine that, certainly. We have the pedestrian volumes, we have the timing, you can make sure that's calibrated.
But it's not just volume, it's
Yeah, it's, it's the cycles, yes. We'll make sure that's calibrated.
If there's, it's a ninety second cycle and then you have forty seconds per hour, forty cycles per hour. Then you have, uh, uh, and then you take out two or three or four of those cycles with that all red.
Hmm.
It, it just creates, that's where the problem is. So, so the, the presentation of level service C, in, in my opinion, is not the valid calculation. You gotta add in there all red. Well, let's just progress to wherever you're.
That largely concludes, I think, the direct, right? We've covered, we covered the onsite circulation, access, covered level service trip generation components pretty thoroughly here. Um, happy to take additional questions, yes.
What is the line of sight expectation at the driveway exit? Or is, is, so, I mean, how far did it?
I'm sorry, how far?
What's the line of sight expectation from the Department of Transportation at the driveway on this site? Just don't know.
Don't have it written down. I'm trying to make sure that I'm remembering the right row of the column.
You can come back.
Yeah, I, I don't want to put the wrong answer on the record. I apologize.
I, I'd like to know the, and, and it may depend on the hog area.
Yeah, it depends on
It's
design speed mostly.
Being nice to know what that is.
Design speed grade, yeah.
My understanding is properties change ownership. And we know, um, because you brought up the questions and make it for some time. Do you know what the ins and outs was of a traffic study done by the previous owners that got transferred? That could be used for comparison?
Not that we're aware of, but we'll check on that.
Thank you.
I don't typically see those in, in land transfers for what it's worth.
Any more questions from the, any professionals?
Also, could you, could you plot the available site distance? Can you plot the cross sectional? The profile of the cross section to the left and to the right as you're coming out of the driveway?
Yeah, we can do that.
So we make sure that it meets the standard.
We can certainly do that. I will assure you that there's not a better location for a site distance perspective, so we could do that.
Um, professionals, any, but I'm sorry, any more, no more questions on the board right at the moment, right? So any questions from our professionals with the traffic engineer?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to hear from the board's traffic car. No, I, I would like to get a copy of these turning exhibits for the loading area and the driveway. I think they were put up briefly on the board.
Is that the lower driveway turning radius, the one at the L O one? Or are you talking, turning, turning radius at the two oh two?
Well, they had, they had a, these truck turning template, uh, how truck would get into the loading area.
The loading area.
And then there was one how the passenger vehicle could get into the parking deck.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, can I just come up? Yeah, sorry, thank you.
That was exhibit eight, great.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get all the exhibits uh over to Mr. Brightland, Director.
Can you provide that?
Mr. Much will get all those exhibits over to you.
Provide that to the
Yes.
Board of directors, so you can post them to the benefit of the public.
Hmm, yep.
I, I have one. Did you say that parking lots can be available with public parking besides the uh, uh, the tenants and the uh?
What I mean by public parking, I mean publicly accessible parking, right? But it's, it's intended to cover parking for the retail and for the residents. But in providing parking for retail, you have to make it so that a member of the retailing public can come in.
So if somebody who, looking for a one, for example, to Burnell or a, a parking shop, you can't find a parking space on two oh two, which is more likely than not.
Right.
He's gonna be able to park in that parking lot, but even though he has no commerce whatsoever to do.
That would be, that would be more of a management's, uh.
Well, he just changed his sign. It says instead of parking in the Burnell, it's all library parking. You are gonna meter it though, as I understood, you have testimonial ready for metering, uh, which, that's not, questions about metering shouldn't be given for someone else, right?
Correct.
Okay.
But our science has provision for point five per unit for visitor parking.
Yeah. That's included in the one point five.
So is there, is there a component that includes visitor parking for the residential?
And so our, our plans right now don't have anything designated or stripes, but we would obviously have to comply with that requirement to do so. The simplest way would be uh assigning the one space per unit and the remaining point five per unit is available as visitor parking. And the visitor parking doesn't have to be assigned visitor. It just needs to be available for visitors.
Yeah, well, I want to go through all of the circulation in the lower parking levels, how we're gonna handle these kind of questions, but it didn't seem that it was exactly your responsibility
And I, I think that the, I think that the assignment and how those spaces are gonna be allocated is uh, more, more toward the applicant
Right.
On that, um.
Okay.
Certainly, they'd like a traffic engineer's input, but
Right.
But at this point, I haven't designed anything or, or allocated spaces, so I don't think it'd be problematic, I'd say.
Did you have any input to the layout of the ramps on the parking levels? And were they, did they ask you about how, when they architected the ramps and L O one and L two, did they ask you about that?
Uh, not directly. I know that, that uh architect consulted with Mr. Much from our office.
There's someone outside, I just don't want to touch on.
All right.
So if you have a net inquiry to someone else's, because we were told we're just gonna hear from So if they have a net inquiry to someone else's, because we were told we're just gonna hear from an architect and and civil engineer. They'll be around the app, a management representative, Mr. uh.
Uh, yes.
Operation.
Yep.
That would be, that would be great. Um, John, I have the option. I can either, for your convenience, I can open this witness to the public for questions. Or we can save the public questions of this witness on.
Right, uh, you know, John, I I think it, I think it actually would make sense you you. Cause Mr. Corax coming back, we knew that coming in because you just retained Mr. Trautman uh tonight. Uh, we've got some homework uh items that we need to do and I'm sure Mr. Trautman's gonna review things. I suspect he'll. The professionals will probably have some conversation between now and the next meeting as well, so maybe we hold those questions. So Mr. Trautman adds further, maybe we just defer it to the next meeting and next.
Go to the next witness. That would be your pleasure.
And then the other side of the point would be if there are questions that could be answered at the next, you know, the next meeting, like some of mine. It could be done at the same time.
Right.
So if you're open to questions tonight.
What do you guys wanna do? I got his opinion, it's like.
The advantage of opening the witness now, but there is.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna mute.
The advantage to opening the questions now, that if the public has questions that require more research. And we don't, we don't have them coming back a third time.
Yeah.
You know, and that's my.
Yeah. Why don't we just roll the questions in? Yeah, as chairman, and I'm just gonna ask.
All right, so this is the traffic engineer.
We just do a our court reporter, well, I think probably a number of people, like, we just do a five minute break.
Yeah. Okay, cause we can still hear your next witness. I don't, I don't wanna violate our timing.
Understood.
So, all right.
All right.
Try to make this a five minute break, so that means. I'm gonna do this off that streaming record. What's that? This is gonna be off the record. Just letting you know how we're gonna proceed. What we intend to do is to have questions from the public of the traffic engineer for up to twenty minutes. And there may be a lot more of them, but that's what we're gonna do because we do want to start the testimony of the architect this evening. Which we'll probably not get through, but we wanna get it started because we know all of you wanna hear about it. So that's our current strategy on meeting, meeting strategy, so.
And Mr. Chairman, for the benefit of the public, can I add, so there's no uh concern or question? My understanding is all three witnesses will be back. And members of the public will be afforded a full and fair opportunity to ask each and every one of those three witnesses. Uh, further questions, uh as well as we have a, as you have all heard. Uh, the board has a traffic, independent traffic consultant that the board retained. To also ask questions uh and possibly have a report with respect to the traffic engineering and the parking.
And then, of course, after questioning, at some point, there'll be opportunities for comment from the public.
Right, after all, that that part of the case is over, members of the public will be sworn. And so your comment has the weight of testimony, equal to the weight of the testimony of all the other witnesses. So that's why we swear you in.
A lot of material. So how are we doing, Denise? We're good?
We're good now, thank you.
Okay, so John.
So Mr. Corak is available for uh for questions and again, just confirming everything Mr. Warner just said. Uh, Mr. Corak will be back. Um, this twenty minute period, we are not suggesting that's the limitation, will be fully available for questions and. The public wanted to hold them to hear from the town's professional or for whatever other case, but he's now available for questions.
All right, so uh do any, do any of the public? This elite group here uh have questions for this witness on traffic? And okay, come on.
I have a question.
Come on down.
Do you want to go there?
Go to the spot.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll hopefully hear you.
And you do have to give us your name and address, but you don't have to be sworn in.
Diane Greenfield, fifteen Oldwood Road. Um, oh, you're here. Yeah, fifteen Oldwood Road. Uh, you testified that the car got on Mount Airy Road, that two trucks about have been in there. Uh, my question is, when the third truck arrives, where is it going to be waiting?
Right, there's two great questions. There's not, I'll stand up. Um, the 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 space in that area wouldn't accommodate that many trucks. Um, we don't anticipate that many trucks being on the side at the same time, um but that that's the layout of the site.
If there was a restaurant there, uh unloading food um or there were supplies, um. That's gonna take some time. I imagine there would be plenty times that there are gonna be more than two trucks waiting to get in there.
Also, uh, may I suggest at the end of that, you're saying isn't that.
Isn't that correct?
Certainly with the the retail use, there are scheduled deliveries, uh similar with residential uses, there are deliveries that are made to the residents. However, with the frequency of those uses, the scheduling of them, we wouldn't anticipate that level of truck traffic.
But if there were, they would be sitting on Mount Airy Road waiting. For one of the trucks to do a K turn and maneuver around the other truck that's in there to get out.
I don't wanna speculate the hypothetical, um, uh, but don't think the truck would. Just sit on Mount Airy Road blocking that full lane of traffic.
Be surprised. Could I ask another question?
Yes, you can ask.
Thank you. Byway, uh, I know the sightline is improved from where it was currently, however. When the cars come around from the light, they're making the turn and they're going very, very slow right now. Um, when they have that extra space there, they're gonna be going much faster, they'll be going up to thirty miles an hour if they're not speeding. Uh, and the sightline will be better, but having taken into consideration the accelerated speed of the cars and the and difficulty. It's gonna make for somebody making a left hand turn onto two oh two across traffic over there.
Right, so the the improved sightline obviously puts you further away from that that crest, that vertical curvature. Um, but part of that, you know, the the roadway geometry, those conditions mean that the car is accelerating. It hasn't accelerated through that speed, and so that's providing those vehicles a little bit additional time. Um, to to be able to see that car oncoming. Um, and to to that extent, this location does afford the the best visibility for um sightlines. And it's also the location that is directly specified in the redevelopment letter.
Okay, thank you.
Does the model consider that the acceleration, you know, from the intersection of early?
At a level service perspective or the sightline?
Somewhere like this, I guess the speed of the, the models kinda.
Yeah, it's a lot of counts for for speed, certainly, um, but the sightlines and Mr. Simoff requests the profiles. Uh, that accounting the grade as well, um, and the grade does factor into um. You have certain sightline requirements where uh an uphill approach requires less sight distance. And that's usually deserved for for steeper slopes, six, nine percent, you know, if you're built on the side of a hill or something like that, but. Um, the the intent there is is that there's an acknowledgement that grade does impact sightline.
So there was previous testimony that it will be onsite management. Will it be an attempt or can you stipulate that the management company will schedule? Um, the mass deliveries for the restaurants and there's yell space, is that possible?
Yeah, we'll, we'll speak to that when we come back and talk to operations. It's a good point.
Uh, another question from the public. Here, come on down.
Hi, Mike Stevens, twelve Woodland Road. Uh, two questions, one is um. Are left turns going to be prohibited out of the into and out of the loading dock?
Into and out of the loading dock? It's not explicitly signed, but that's the intent, is that the current configuration does not support that left turn.
Just to follow, is it possible the county is getting you, is gonna limit you anyway and so you.
Very likely, very likely, yeah.
It's just possible if they get the county information back.
Maybe defer it into that to be something you stipulated, Roger.
Sorry, can I get, can I get that again?
I'm just asking that would be something that was stipulated by so much and it's inside onsite. Yeah, yes.
That's an affirmative, yes, stipulated.
As long as the county is good and I've never seen a county say no to no left turns, so.
So now you're second.
So the engineer last week testified that trucks could back up into the loading zone. And showed a diagram on that. You said that they wouldn't be doing that.
Go ahead, turn.
And so to clarify that, the question is between the consistency of the testimony, I assume. To clarify, the first part, right, the the trucks headed north on Mount Airy. They're right into the loading area, the the outdoor portion. And then internal to the site, back up into the loading zone or into the covered loading area underneath.
I believe the diagram, correct me if I'm wrong, the diagram showed a truck backing up into the loading zone.
But no.
It was a turning diagram and it showed what he said.
Yes.
Pulling and pulling up into the into the area, into the open areas and then backing into the. Toward the doorway, basically. That's not consistent with.
Yes, that's correct.
Wouldn't the template restrict the second truck in the loading zone? Wouldn't the doors? Turn into the loading zone? And then wouldn't it take almost a full, does it take a full width? Through the loading zone, the load is circulating and now?
Right, so to get into that covered loading area, yes.
So therefore, it would only be able to hold one truck.
I mean, you could, you could stage two with more movements and there's a variety of size trucks, vans, et cetera. I don't wanna say it's impossible to stage that.
And probably just take it, we do one of the things to be to show.
Yes, and this is.
Yep, I'm I'm sorry. We're gonna figure out how best to do it so that it complies with the process rights of everybody here. We need to pay all members of the public. Uh, are we looking, uh, is that one of the exhibits that was previously shown? Uh, is that exhibit, uh, the truck turning was eight three, if I recall correctly? Uh, maybe we can have eight three put up on the board so everybody can see it and you can ask him a question.
Paul, you just.
Eight three. I don't want the public or board members to be left out.
That's the point. That's the excellent.
Well, I'm telling you, it's bad news, right?
Everybody's gotta hear it.
Yeah, so I'll go to the sheet.
One of that.
The engineer testified.
Yeah, what, is this exhibit eight three?
Exhibit eight three.
And it's the sheet one or two of our post, two pages. This is the first page.
First page.
Okay, and uh, Mr. Stevens has some questions.
I recall that that was explained, that that truck was backing up, and that's what it looks like to me. And that's what a lot of people here remember.
Okay, so I won't explain.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, I just want other people to stop, please let Mr. Stevens ask his questions, so to be honest.
If you could confirm that, and then if you do confirm that that is a truck backing up. Can you explain how that's going to happen when there are ten cars behind them that are not going to allow it to?
Right, so I understand the confusion. But the truck will not be backing from Mount Airy Road into the dock, so here's the progression, which I can use the mouse. You're starting at the, you know, the south end headed north on Mount Airy Road, and you could see on the truck how. Uh, the back tires, you have the two, you know, the the two sets of tires, you know, even your your rear tires on a. On a truck are typically a double set and the front tires are a single set of tires. You see how it's a thicker tire here? And that helps us orient, uh, you know, the the rectangle that we are showing as the truck, and so that truck maneuvers. Makes the right turn in and then straightens out in this loading area. Backs into the loading dock area, can unload. And then at time of departure, pulls straight forward again. And how Mount Airy Road, you can see here how it's continuing to face north with the front tires up front and the rear tires in the back.
Okay. Is it conceivable that the truck is too big to be able to do that?
Uh, there are trucks that are too big to be able to do that. This truck, the S U thirty, can navigate the space.
You would agree to do the forty, but.
Right.
Come back.
Yeah, it's a, S U thirty is thirty feet long, front bumper, rear.
Um, one more, when you re- when you reapply, I think you showed the stop bar and the striping.
On uh, Mount Airy Road. Yes, we happy to.
The two lanes.
Yes.
Next question from the public of the traffic engineer. Come on then.
Carrie Hazelton. I'm sorry, did I hit that? Yes, it's Carrie, K E R R Y, Hazelton, H A S E L T O N, Mindbrooke Road. Just thinking about this um design with the loading dock. So for this building, the only way that a truck is going to be able to. Access the building is northbound on Mount Airy. There's not gonna be any left turns either out or in, so. How will the truck driver, will there be some way of informing them that they need to be coming in off two eighty seven and Mount Airy North? So that we don't get into a situation with trucks that are expecting that they're gonna be able to come south on Mount Airy. And pull in, um, or. Alternatively, and I wouldn't think ideally, making a left on the two oh two northbound and then pulling into the. Residential driveway, is that the backup? And if so, is there enough clearance for a truck to get in there underneath, do their job and get out?
Right, so the the truck circulation question is something that we encounter at hundreds of sites where you have. A turning restriction at the drive. Anytime you have a left turning restriction at a driveway, you're not able to make that turn into the driveway from that direction. So the same principles apply here. They need to come from Mount Airy Road in the south, likely coming off that exit two eighty seven. Um, and uh utilize the loading area in that way. To that end, no, we do not, the second question, no, we do not um anticipate or forecast those trucks utilizing. The uh, the residential, commercial, the parking structure, uh, access drive for passenger vehicles.
So when an Amazon truck comes northbound, eastbound on two oh two and gets to the light. And makes a right or sees that there is no truck access there, what is there, they're going to then? There's, there's not a lot of options, we're getting back where they need to go, North Finley Avenue.
These logistics companies have very comprehensive routings. Uh, understanding of access, especially on multifamily projects where you have multiple clients being served at one single location. It, yeah, the logistics companies have a very well.
Well, thank you.
I have a short question as well today.
Sure.
So just an Amazon van, not an Amazon truck. They can't pull in and turn left coming out, it's starting to be no left turn for them as well?
At this point, we're looking at the left turn restriction for them as well.
Okay.
I mean, we're we're open to discussion from the board on it, but that was my understanding from the stipulation.
And it also ties to delivery, so as part of it is how many of what style trucks are gonna be in this loading zone.
Sure.
That speaks to and what other deliveries are there and many of the Amazon vehicles. May have another way of, but on premise of delivering something, but that's all. Part of the discussion. And 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 the companies can certainly limit the the height and length of the trucks that they dispatch to. Still, the important thing is, okay, how many? Still, the important thing is, okay, how many trucks are going to be in that loading zone? How does it work? To arrive, all these questions are still important to answer. Okay, um, next question.
All right, Aaron Duff. Fifty-one Crestview Drive. In Burnsville. Uh, you testified that the passenger vehicle deliveries, uh, or Uber, DoorDash, things like that would be utilizing the. Residential driveway to come down.
They have an option to.
They have an option to, they don't have an option to use the loading zone. They do have an option to use the, um. Return passenger vehicle.
Yes, yeah, the option to use the the ramp down to the garage area, not the loading zone. So an option to utilize the ramp down to the the parking area.
And if they want to be making their deliveries, picking up their fares somewhere other than on an active roadway. They would have to use that, is that correct?
Correct.
So my question is, and I'm sorry, the you also testified that it's a metered lot, but. For a gate. Before you get. There's a gate. Where you pay before you get in or ticket ticket.
I would have to defer those questions to operations, how they.
Yeah, we actually have an answer for that and we'll speak to operations for those for those short deliveries, the road hub delivery. And the accommodations that would be made, they wouldn't be paying a meter. Uh, a meter rate for those types of deliveries, but we'll speak to that at a at a future meeting through operations.
Okay, I understand. It's important, but it's.
Yep.
Quite in scope.
Yep, no, it's a good, it's a good point, don't get me wrong.
All right.
Uh, Jerry Negri, uh. Ambar Clay.
So I'm sorry, can I get that?
Jerry Negri. Thirty-six Ambar.
Can you please spell your last name, sir?
N E G R I.
Thank you.
I have a question. I I haven't heard. The address of how you're going to. Unload for the stores on the other end. Where they're gonna, where's that truck gonna? He's gonna unload in that loading dock in the residential area and then walk, they're gonna walk the products all the way around? Is that how they're doing it?
So I will. Sort two parts of this.
Okay.
The first part is the the loading operation will take place in that loading zone. The second portion is related to the movement of goods on the site and I will defer that to the architects with the full. You know, routings and and design ability.
It's important to go.
Yeah, certainly, yes.
Last question.
Okay, let's try to make it a good one then. Michelle Khan over, um, on the Sixteenth Rose Avenue. So I live right off of Mount Airy Road and the loading dock is like a concern for me. Um, so my concern is that because the trucks can only come in on Mount Airy. Um, we all know that that's, you know, that's not going to be reality because trucks are going to get diverted off two eighty seven when there's. When Mount Airy is backed up, which happens often, if there's an accident on two eighty seven, trucks do not always come in on two eighty seven. They'll be coming in. Uh, from northern two eighty seven and coming down like, you know, through the main part of Burnsville. They'll be coming up on two oh two. Uh, also in wanting to make that right-hand turn, is there any type of traffic study that can be done or projected? That will kind of show these misrooted trucks that now have to turn around somewhere so that they can be coming down. Mount Airy Road, because if anybody who lives in that area knows, there's just all little side streets and neighborhoods. So I'm wondering what the impact on those neighborhoods is going to be for these trucks that have not been told you must come. Down Mount Airy, because they're not, they're going to come in from all different directions and go, oh, I can't turn in there, and they're going to want to turn around fast because they have delivery schedules. So that's that's my concern. I don't know if there's a traffic study that can be done or projections that can be made for that. You know, based on your number of deliveries that you are guessing, I think it's going to be a little bit higher based on my little street and the deliveries that we get, but. I'm just concerned about the local neighborhoods and the impact that these trucks might have on them.
Understood, and I think, uh, something for us to do would be coordinate with, uh. The the board's traffic engineer to help understand that.
Yeah, and it's worth having, it's worth having a section or discussion that says for trucks approaching from each of the various. Locations, what's the expected path? So people don't realize when a truck approaches from. Uh. West, coming west and south. They're not supposed to come to the intersection. They're supposed to go up Clearmont. That's the only road they're allowed to take and most people wouldn't know that that's the case, but. It's important that that be included as, and I agree with you, uh, collaboratively, as a discussion of how trucks. Consequences, living consequences would be expected to be handled. Um, I know you say, well, they can just route them, but it's like, well, does that mean they have to turn on white net and go up and get lower? And what are they gonna do? All right.
Yeah, that's her last, uh, spell her last name, like. Conover, C O N O V E R.
So this witness will be available in the future for more questions, um, but now we would like to take a shot at, um. Allowing the architectural witness.
At least just. Got it?
You need to swear?
Yeah, if you raise your right hand. You swear to God or a current testimony about to give us the whole truth and all the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith, can you please provide the board a brief summary of your educational professional background license as you hold?
Good, I'm, uh. An architect for approximately forty years, graduate of Yale University. Um, have worked in a variety of types of projects for Robert A. Stern Architects and are. Nationally known firm. The, and among my projects have been high-end, uh. Residential projects, the Museum of American Revolution in Philadelphia. Uh, projects for several universities like Harvard and. I have a particular interest in in town planning.
I'm sorry, what?
Town planning.
And your license?
License in New Jersey and New York and about fourteen other states.
They always ask the question, is your license current?
It is, I just, I just. Thank you.
Board member, some of you stealing all my time.
Here, no file, so I thought I would give you.
Thanks.
Chairman. Whether, yeah, I thought I would give you a a quick walkthrough, the the plans that they are not necessarily self. Explanatory. Um, and we started at the bottom with the the. Lower level parking plan.
And these are the plans submitted.
These are the plans that are submitted.
More than ten days in advance of today, correct?
These have been submitted for a long time.
Right, and the date is last revised?
I don't think they're revised.
I'd like to sort of refer to these plans as the baseline plans for this year. Cause it's original, it's the vanilla original stuff.
And it just scrolls off.
Is it September, is it September thirteen, twenty twenty three?
I'm sorry, can I get that one, um, you guys are?
Is it September thirteen, twenty twenty three?
Yes, with a revision of one twenty six, twenty four.
Mr. Warner, why don't we just see, just to be clear here, why don't we just mark, why don't we just mark them anyway? Uh, and that way there's no question.
What about?
And I think. Eight four?
You should be.
I think so.
I think we did. No, you know what?
We didn't do it no, any of your ones.
No, because we just showed once we've already.
All right, eight four would be the whole compendium of the last revised January twenty six, twenty four architectural plans. However many sheets there are, what does it go from A one hundred to A three hundred?
And then these, these are posted on our web. Denise.
If they were submitted, then yes, they're there, yes.
So where were the professionals with printing these out themselves, just to be clear, because they. Not with them submitted. Well, now they're marked and 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 please. ASAP so they can be on the website if they're not already up there.
All right.
So. Not particularly interesting, but the 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 thing to note is that this is, this level is completely underground. So it is effectively along the the railroad track line, it is one level. This level is one full level below that and effectively along Morristown Road or two oh two, it's it's two. Full floors below grade. So. I will go to the next. Hope.
Oh, wait a minute, you just want to go through all the sheets for perspective first, is that what you're doing?
Well, I think.
Finding each one?
I I thought it would be best to explain in detail the next one. I'm sorry, which way shall I?
Just navigate them out, please. Yeah, there's a button right there.
Can't press the long.
It makes it difficult. So take the 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 one. Floor plan of the garage that requires the most explanation is this one, which is. It is approximately the level of the loading area and and the the level of. Mount Airy Road at the at the at that corner here. And that there's an, in a pretty much an entire floor grade change between. The the northeast corner of the site on. Morristown and this one, so that that's approximately to like a level four oh nine. Four eleven, actually, at the at the, just where the driveway comes out and the level of. Of this loading area here at Morristown Road is three ninety nine, so it's. Twelve to thirteen feet of difference between those two. Elevations. Um, my colleague had, Paul had noted that one of the optimizations we did was actually to raise this level. About a foot and a half, which allowed us to shorten the ramp. Um, that's in this gray area coming down from Morristown Road and one of the advantages that that did. Gave us is the ability to have a direct access for pedestrians from this parking level. To the corner. Plaza. On. The the intersection, so you were able to, without using an elevator. And so we imagine that these are actually the primarily the the retail park parking spaces. A a person be able to just actually go. Directly onto this, onto this space. So some of the question, I know there were questions about. You know, how to, how to, how to retail. Parkers, you know, know where to go and do do they have access to an elevator and in fact they don't need it? And so you. So then. To see this area here. This is the, this area here is the loading, we've in enclosed loading dock.
And I'm sorry to interrupt. Can you try to speak directionally so that if and when anybody reads the transcripts, uh, they'll understand what over here and over there means?
Okay, right, I'm. It's hard to explain, so the, uh. Th- this is the loading area and I just.
Lower left-hand corner.
Is the, is the, is the loading area and this, we talked about how the the trucks can back up in here. I'm gonna actually. Zoom in on that spot. So you can see it more clearly. Adjacent to the loading area is a, is additional, um, space, which we imagined. Will be part of receiving packages and also provides a way to get into the. Into the retail. And also adjacent to this is. The service elevator. For the whole building and the, uh, the bottom of the trash chute. So there are two trash chutes, one for recycling. One for trash, there's compactors at the bottom of of that. These have been actually based on some of the projects that we we toured that Advance has done and larger buildings, it's pretty much the same size. Trash and compactor, uh, locations, and those will be able to be taken out and and picked up by a trash, a trash truck. Again, out of the same, in the same location. And those are completely covered and screened from public view.
Question about the service, is that, is that, it's internal of the garage, is that intended for cars or is that walled off?
It's walled off and some of the things we're looking at are. Um, whether some of that space should be used for this package room, for example, you know. Um, this is a, this is an issue and I, my clients will talk about that in operations later. Things do, are evolving and each of their. Apartment buildings have had a little bit different answer to that, so we've reserved that space to be able to deal with. How much goes to that and how much we want to dedicate to getting the, uh, service requirements for the, for the, uh. Retail uses.
Can I ask on that with the garbage, you're saying there's a garbage chute and compactors and I assume that's for the residential.
That's true.
Aspect of the project. You have a restaurant, you have retail, where is your garbage for that?
It is, uh, it's assumed to be in this area.
So a restaurant has to.
They they have access to this level and I will point that out in a moment from.
And you have a capacity along with sixty-eight residences, some two and three bedrooms, to also manage restaurant waste?
No, the restaurant, but waste would be separated, so it is in that that wedge, this labeled service and M A B.
There's a whole question of whether there'd be restaurants in this because it's stipulated to in terms of retail, it's a journey parking.
Your parking, parking will affect restaurants.
It's a great question, but there there's even a more interesting basic question about whether restaurants will be part of this. I have one really important question for you, which is this is a deluxe, super premium. Residential. Facility and you're gonna make me walk the farthest possible that you could have picked to drop my garbage down a sheet. It's the absolute worst location. From a. Resident's perspective in terms of where you're telling me I have to drop. My garbage and recycling, what was in your head?
The. It it is, it virtually impossible to, the 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 chutes have to be. To lead to compactors and the compactors really cannot be anywhere else on the site.
How big are the compactors? Well, they fit in that room.
They fit in that room.
Well, how do you get them out of that?
No, they're, they they roll, they're. They they are, they are, th- this is the the way that Advance has done it in other.
This is a significant architectural. Problem.
Yeah.
In terms of degrading the value. Of this. Project, which we care about. And it makes it harder to sell these units. And rent them. And I gave you the answer to this. And you need to look at it again and say, okay, I'm pretending to be a renter of this. Where do I want to drop my garbage? And it isn't where you die.
It is not the.
No.
Ideal place for it, but I.
It's a really terrible, it's the worst place.
It is, it is literally impossible to get a trash truck into into in into other places on that side.
And I gave you the answer. They may not have given it to you.
I did read, I I'm sorry.
It is not.
Professional, my professional opinion is that it it is impractical to get a truck in that place and provide. The number of parking spaces we need to and to provide.
Forget that, that's not true. It's, I'm saying this point is one of many that are unacceptable. This degrades the value and the profitability of this project. And as architect, there are a number of concerns like this that reduce the the lucrativeness of this. Facility and we're partners with you. We lose when you don't rent. And that's really special and you picked. With the whole design, you picked, and this is just one aspect, you picked the worst possible location for trash. And there are other ways of handling it.
Okay, I beg to differ, but.
But you can defer, but I just defer with you, you know, and I gave you the, it's not like I said, oh, it's terrible.
We understand, Jim.
We understand.
We hear the call.
We'll move on because I want to.
So I will want to explain the the circulation of the garage as well.
Yeah.
So cars come down the ramp. And there is a control point. And then to continue to the lower level, they take this middle bay and go down. And it goes down half a. And it goes down half a level, this is half a level below and that continues on down to the lower to the lower level. So effectively, this area here is flat and that's the area that. As I mentioned before, we can lead you directly to the uh retail spa, retail ou- ou- outside to get to the retail space.
Uh, just. In support of your statement and and explaining it, if people need to understand, because it's hard to visualize, but what he just said was. You come down the driveway, you go a bit to the right on the bottom, you go a bit to the left rather and. To get to the lower level, you go down that ramp to a mid a mezzanine level, a mid level. Which is where his mouse's cursor is right now, that's kind of in the middle of the two floors and you proceed to the right. And then you go down from the mi- mezzanine down to the lower lobby, that's how it's structured. And instructed, so it's just tough to, it's if that's the way it is, it's tough to visualize a bit, but. In the in the top of the drawing, you're basically looking at a kind of mezzanine floor between. The L O one floor and the L O two floor. My question is, why didn't you circulate it the other way, why didn't you come in, make a right hand turn, go down the short ramp to the mezzanine? And then take the long ramp down to L O two, that would have shortened the flight of stairs up to the street for the users that. That are going from the mid mezzanine to the to the street level.
Because from a traffic perspective, you don't want to im- immediately make a turn. Anyone plans a garage, you want to get in the garage before you're making a turn to the to the. To the ramp. And vice versa, when you're coming up the ramp. Not making a very sharp left turn to get get out of there. Suffice it to say, this this gave us the most.
I I understand that was just is an optimization and then when we go through, and I love what you did with the. Upper northwest corner in a the exit, we go through how parking is gonna work for. Retail for guests or visitors and or tenants and we go through that in the tail, it'll pan out.
One percentage of these piles are dead end aisles. Yeah, one on the one.
You have the one immediate with that, you have two on this floor, right?
And so what effectively one percent of the. Cars are.
This is the L O one, right, so just the one on the west side is dead end.
Well, the one on the west is dead end and this is like, this is. Yeah, it is.
Oh, that's the little mini ramp up, right?
No, the 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 one on the east is the mini ramp up. That's a dead end, as is this, the the part that is presumably leading for the the retail.
Sorry, we were talking at the same time. I didn't get that.
Well, and we can walk through the details later, but one of the things I want to understand is how tenants will access the elevators.
So tenants will access the elevators from from this from this area.
You're gonna make them walk up to the mezzanine to get into.
Now, that is down to the.
Down to the, well, or up from L O two.
You can get to it, you there's space space below.
There's another elevator access on the lower.
Yeah, there is.
The elevator has another stop.
Yeah, it has another stop below that.
So for L O one, they need to walk down to the mezzanine to get to the elevator.
For the residential, which is, which is, I I think. And and it's purposeful, just to answer, is purposeful to kind of say that the the eastern half of the. To eastern two thirds of this is the residential parking and that's about the proportion that. We expect to have. So that's what's gonna lead you directly into the apartments.
I understand.
And these these uh. So finished floors are about ten feet apart.
Right, yes. They're about ten feet apart. And so you you have, so we're allowing ourselves to two and a half feet for structure and pipes and. So it's not a, it's not a precast.
So my question is the grades of the ramp. If you have. The the ramp in the middle. Is uh.
Ninety three.
Sixty, six point seven, six point seven or six point six percent percent.
Okay, that was my question, what's the grade of the ramps?
Yeah, that's that's the the it's it's standard for a parking garage is six point six percent. For a par- our park on ramp.
Okay, sorry for.
A park on ramp.
I have a question about the ramps, are they two way?
Yes, it's two way. It's park on, it's a, it's a, you know, you've been in garages whereas cars on either side, they're wide enough to be. Eighteen feet and twenty four feet in the middle.
To visualize that on this.
Yeah.
Because if they get too steep, then the the doors.
You you you're not allowed to make them that.
Sorry, you're not allowed.
You're not allowed to make them too steep, so it is, it is a.
You're at about a max.
Yeah, but it's, it is, it is industry standard for all all parking garages that. Anyone does.
I I don't think the elevator can work here, um, but we can validate it with you. So if you go to your L O two floor. Level, we're saying there will be an elevator stop, correct, on the lowest level? What's the, what's the elevation of that elevator door? Approximately, what do you think it is, three?
The elevators, if you, I. The entrance to the elevator is on this level. We're showing, if this is basically showing two levels at once.
So you're saying that all access from L O one and L O two will be through that elevator door, those elevator doors. Wherever I park and then.
No, because there's actually, there's two, there's two different, there's two different levels that are shown. You can get to the elevators at the top of this short. Bit and by the time you're here, you're at the full level.
You can't get to it from there.
No, you you are, because you're down, you're down a full level below this door.
But is it, is it the the dark line that goes.
At the wall.
That's a wall.
Wall, yeah.
So the 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 ramp is going up to on the right side and that's getting you to a a. I really effectively a mezzanine level, it's about three, three and a half feet above. And the other level is is nine feet. Below that.
Let's see, I can. So I'm looking at L, I'm looking at L O one.
Yeah.
So I park in the stub on the right.
Yeah.
Not even outside the wall.
Oh, on the ramp up? No.
This 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 part.
Yeah. That's an up ramp.
That's an up ramp.
That's a six point seven also.
Yeah.
So if I park, if I'm parked over there. How do I get the elevator?
You walk in this door here. Right, and then if you want to get, by the time you're at this mid level. Yeah, okay.
Okay, so now that's where I get to there, now I'm on the mezzanine level, which is about the mezzanine level.
On the other side of the wall.
On the other side of the wall. Now, how do I get from the elevator there?
Because that level is, sorry, I'm going back to the lower level. It it it, these parking spaces are shown on both planes. And they are floor apart because this is, this part is a half level down and this area on the upper floor is. Not quite a half level up, so there's enough space to get elevator doors on both in both places.
Now, so I'm now, I'm on the mezzanine though, and you say I get the elevator by. Going. I go to the wall there.
I'm sorry, I couldn't do this.
Yeah, no, it can't work, it doesn't.
It's three levels, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it doesn't work. The ramp up, you get crushed on the ramp up, you don't have full headroom, the partial headroom on the ramp up, it's not a full floor.
And you don't need.
Get to an elevator.
Can my architect just speak to it and just clarify?
You're basically going up not quite a half level on the on the stub up and you are full half level on this on the on the at the mezzanine. So you have a full floor of distance between those two spaces.
I guess where the.
They're open, they're opening.
That split scenario.
No. The elevator.
Can't be at the mezzanine.
It is at the mezzanine. This is the mezzanine. Come off.
You can't do an L O two mezzanine and and L O one upstream with an elevator, it doesn't work, the doors don't open properly.
And it's along the, it's along the ramp.
Yeah, it doesn't work.
You show on that right pile. You show the up.
Yeah, see, uh, it's the main range, let's call it.
No, but this is, this is down, this is going down, this is this, the area at the top of this plan, I'm zoom out of it.
Yeah, but it's a sloped floor.
It's a sloped floor from this place, this point down, this is L L two. But this, these plans show this area in both plans.
Correct, because it's the mezzanine.
It's the mezzanine. So on this floor, you can get to it from the side here and on the floor above, because you've gone up. Three and a half feet, you're able to get to it effectively a full elevator stop above. Where you went in. If you'd like us to to prov- provide a section.
No, I think. I'd like to grade it out.
Right, right.
Yeah, we'll do it. Okay.
I'm starting to separate, I didn't hear.
Spot grades.
Grade it out with. About elevation.
Be happy to.
On level one, you come in that ramp up, there's only twenty seven feet long before you hit the handicap parking spaces at six. You come up one point eight feet, so there's some issues that have to be worked out, it's not a half level.
No, no, it's on, it's it's crunching you against the ceiling of the ground floor units. You're right, ye- yes, it's saying, it's being creative and it's saying there's space here. If we run this ramp up, because we're doing the ramp down below it, right, so if we just run the ramp up in this spot. We can kind of scooch, you know, against the ceiling and we can kind of fit us a couple spaces there and. And maybe we can get the elevator to work.
So but Bob Brennan's going is that the handicap has to be two percent access.
Right, the handicap is on the mezzanine, it's not in that.
But the but the root tip one has to be.
Plan had handicap.
Wait, I'm sorry, you're you're.
The original plan had handicap there, I think a new revised, you've enhanced it, so that's okay. I, once again, don't think satisfactory for an apartment complex of this significance and importance that the elevator be situated that way. That people have to walk that far to it and. I've given you the the answer, so. It degrades the value of the project. Were there other questions, were there, on anything else you wanted to say about L O one?
No.
And I have, there are two other elevators shown.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, what is the service elevator for the residential building, so that's move in, move out?
Too small, but gotta make, you'll make it bigger, sure.
And that's the one that's by the service dock, right?
Yeah, and the other elevator is to provide to for. The retail users to get across the garage and use that, get wares, if it were a restaurant. Things up to the up to the corner.
So could you discuss how it goes from the service dock to the. The old Palmer Building.
Right.
The the existing building.
Right.
And the uh and the new.
So the old Palmer Building would have a, as it does now, a door. Uh, on the south side. It, there will be an opening in this wall, so you can walk across the parking to get to that other service elevator, so that that. Retail space can be serviced.
So the service for the retail, other than the existing building, has to go through the parking.
That's the way they would go.
Yeah.
Yeah, they would leave the serviced area that's in the lower left hand corner. On a cart, whatever, and they, you know, motorized thing and they would go right over to that door that's at the bottom of the service storage that it's got there. You go right through that door and then you have access to the storage facility for retail.
So that that T shaped storage area.
Where?
On the top. Uh, the middle storage, that's storage for the retail.
That's storage or additional space for the retail.
That's what they recommended.
So is that included in the gross square footage?
No.
No.
So then how from that that storage space does it get to the retail? If if you have to bring, if you're bringing packages and deliveries into that area, how does it get into the retail, that's all that would be on the. Right side of the plan.
We in the next, the next floor plan, we're gonna say, the next floor plan will start the level to right above this where you can see. And you're asking about the retail that's in the north.
Yes.
East or. Which would be the next.
But but when, the the question is. You gotta get it upstairs, so I guess you take it up the elevator.
Well, because of the free elevator, what does it get you?
Just, the free elevator just goes up one door.
Correct, it gets you to the to the retail floor.
Oh, oh, sorry, he, me in the upper, are you talking the northwest corner elevator?
Yeah.
Are you talking this real freight? That's just an elevator, but that facility, that's it, oh, that's. It's internal.
Right, good. But when we give, when you go to the next picture, you see the store goes here. There's on the northeast, on the northeast.
There's retail.
Right, so you got, no, your question is, you got the goods only.
Right, and how do you get us to the retail?
How do you get up to the northeast?
I'm sorry, to get to speak with one of the.
The question I, we were discussing. Is if you have goods that are delivered at the service dock, pushed through the garage to the area marked service storage. On the uh northwest corner. As the, then how does the goods that are in that area move to the next floor and over to the retail that's on the. That that would.
Well, you're hypothesizing that retail goods are gonna get there.
Well, how is it gonna get there?
Well, you you just burn it out on the, you know, if you did stones or whatever.
Yeah, well, it it wouldn't actually be possible to relocate that elevator and provide a way to 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 get across this archway. And have a little sort of back at back service for.
That's also solved in the optimization I gave here.
And the question. Another question. The northwest blue area. Is that all retail?
Yes. The this this area.
So, and you may have enhanced this, did you remove the fitness center?
No, I guess it's in some.
That picture, it's here, it's off, it's off the road.
So it used to be, the original plans, the the bottom of it used to be in the corner, it used to be the fitness center, because in the revised plans. They've relocated it, which is an improvement.
So what is the, what is the, my question is, what is the total gross square footage of the retail?
Rob, do you remember, it's nine thousand nine, it's about nine thousand nine hundred. It's eighty six hundred square feet of of retail.
I mean, the.
Nine thousand two hundred thirty square.
But if you measure that, the blue areas.
That's the nine thousand two, uh, two hundred and thirty with the second floor of the Palmerville. That's.
I don't think so. Because the storage is all covered. Not included. The storage is nothing, nothing included. Because that's meets the definition of gross square footage.
Your preference is in mind. But it's not, it's not, we were not counting that storage here.
But it's. Based on the ordinance and the regulations of the.
We'll we'll confirm it.
We'll confirm.
Yeah, easy to do.
Because I was looking at the engineering plan and there's differences in square footage.
So here we are at the ground floor.
Right, so this is, this is. The 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 street fronted. Which is pretty much flat, where the, you know, do you know there is a significant amount of grade change that Paul mentioned earlier? And so the all the the retail spaces obviously open onto the onto that space on the on both streets. The the tenants of the building come through this archway. And they enter a lobby and immediately find the elevators that go up upstairs, not not crossing. They are, they're undercover from the streets and they're not going past other apartments to get to the elevators.
So you mentioned the tenants, just to clarify, so that is still a tenant only quarter?
That is.
I'm I'm sorry, I didn't hear your your question again.
I was asking if the courtyard is tenant only.
We we imagine the control point is somewhat back, not on the, not on the on the street, so some of that, some of that archway is. Available to the public.
No, it would be available with windows for retail to show their wares, it's not publicly available. But it's useful for a retail person.
Yeah, I think the the remainder of floor plan, I think, is fairly straightforward, the the. The courtyard is flat and meets ADA requirements for being able to to use it, which the current site. Has moments where it is steeper than five percent.
Who who ADA? Tenants ADA?
Yes.
So. Couple of people.
We have.
It's a regulation.
Is a regulation, we are required to provide any any sort of outdoor space has.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, the doors stuck to me. And the doors are not shown on these drawings for retail, where 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 are the doors?
The doors, we don't know how many retailers there might be, so if there is storefront along that whole thing and. You will be able to put it a door wherever it makes sense, depending on the tenancies.
And it's and it's walk through inside the door, or is there any? Is the door. That opens interior, right, there'll be a doorway into the retailer?
Yes, in storefront, door doors in storefront.
Wow.
And it's not marked on that in the sheet, the the plan. Wordplay that's numbered as the unit of shows on seating area.
On the northwest area or sitting there or where?
Yeah.
Are you not in there? What do you call those bits? Those little. Yeah, in the part you got little. Little looks or something like that.
Seating areas, there's these little.
There are seating areas, okay.
There's there is.
On the engineering plan.
They're they're noted on the i- engineering plan, but they're drawn on this.
It shows on the engineering plan, proposed cafe seating.
Yeah.
So you provide parking for the back cafe seat?
There is the reverse cafe seat.
It follows five tables.
It's these five tables, it's it's. It's in a covered area that's adjacent, would be accessible from the upper level of the Palmerville.
So is that, is that gross square first square footage?
I'm not, I'm not following Mr. Simel.
I'm concerned about the parking requirement. Oh.
For uh, for having table amenities?
Well, restaurants are one per four seats. And and retail is uh, one per three hundred.
Right.
So I'm saying, hey, I need. That area, if it's seating for a restaurant. So you add if it's uh. Five tables, twenty seats. You need five more parking seats.
So, no. I I know.
Didn't we, we asked you some.
Right.
Didn't we ask you for some elevations or explanation of that area that this.
Sure.
Especially now you got a door under it, right, I mean, so that's cool, but. What did it look like? So you're envisioning that that area, those five tables, right? At the top five tables, they're associated with Palmer's second floor.
Correct.
They're an amenity for that.
Yep.
Retail building, and they're not for the, there might be a window, I guess, to the right in the other. But it's not expected that anybody in the blue to the right of those tables is accessing those tables, correct?
That's that's correct.
It may.
I just don't.
It may have some good back part of that, where it might be a restaurant.
Or it could go the other way, there are there are similar levels.
A bagel place. I, all I think is, whatever it is, it's just helpful if we understand what the intent is. Part of it is flexible, then that should be the intent, but.
I I think that is the intent, is in terms of of flexibility, we don't have any set. And for those tables, we don't know who our tenants are going to be, but it's illustrative of of an area.
And it would be, it's not open to the quote. To get to that, you would be, need to be a patron of the uh, retail or whatever.
No, correct.
And would then have access to it, it's not like I'm walking along the street and I got a sandwich and I want to go.
Sit down.
Sit down, okay. All right, well, this chairman, do we, I don't, we need a motion? It's up to.
To extend.
Whether you want to break or extend.
Um, well, is this a? Do you want to just? Do you have much more?
Why don't I run through the other plans and then and actually answer that that question of what that space is.
Okay.
I'll take a motion to extend for fifteen minutes.
Okay.
So. All things.
All right. All right.
I have one more question on this for for. Okay, the mailroom is, that's just US mail, or is that gonna be for packages as well?
It's just US mail.
Just US mail, packages come down to the.
Yeah, and again, I think th- this is an operations thing that is, what is found that this, it has evolved. Uh, a lot and.
Do the apartments on the um, first floor facing the courtyard, do they have access? Right, you walk out from your apartment right into the courtyard?
Yeah, the ones that are on the south wing have little gardens. And it should also be noted that the elevation of those floors is about a foot above the courtyard, just so it's. And that actually is partially due to a way to provide additional headroom with that ramp. If you remember, the ramp underneath, underneath the the north, south wing goes.
So those are like little patios.
They're little patios, but not on, not on this end, because it du- didn't seem very nice.
Okay.
So.
Was that the only?
Yeah.
That was good too, okay.
If I did. Well. These are. Very straightforward, just apartments.
Well, so what we're seeing here is the second and third.
And third floor.
Yeah. There, you have a two bedroom dwelling over the loading now? Yeah? Fifteen feet up.
So you need to say this is the second and third floor, so it's because the grade difference between the front. The frontage and and go along that is. Yes?
Uh. Now, the 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 first floor is the is the courtyard level, it's. It's it's flat.
Right.
There is a basement that become, you know, effectively the parking becomes a basement as it moves down along Mount Airy. It becomes exposed by one level and.
Right.
And along the entire south frontage and like.
The elevation, sure. Got it.
Why don't I get? Get to those, the fourth floor is slightly different because we have. The the lower half of a gambol roof, if if you will, there are roofs that come in, some of them are are full on gabled. But most of them are relatively steep and. Use zoom in spots, you can see these areas that are really too low to stand in, they're gray. Those are in full gable, gable roofs.
Once again, for value, we do want you to consider. Gambol roof, not gabled, so architecturally, seriously, can you do a look at? Using gambol roof, because this is one of the reasons, it devalues the project by having this kind of incursion into the space for these rooms. The fourth floor is obviously where the most impact is for root treatment. There are some differences in the fourth floor, there was, there're like some one bedrooms up there, and the eastern.
Yeah.
But it's not.
It's partially due, it's partially due the on the fourth floor, no, it's partially due to the impacts of the roof.
Mm-hmm.
And the roofs have it.
The habit of what?
Of the roofs. And the roofs have an impact, you know, no matter what they're, what they are, you you know, one of the. Like, there was a question about this, the 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 bump out.
Oh, yeah.
It is specifically designed to be a sort of a feature and that be a thinner element that's coming against the street as opposed to the full sixty foot depth of.
The county just coming along and knocking off the edge of your building, that's all. So you got a bill to allow.
Palmer building.
Every little bit helps.
So, you know, the the roofs are designed so that. You know, they look like a, they look like a, a. The the lower half of a gambol, because you normally can't see the top half of a gambol, but it creates uh, these. Wells, whi- which we are able to put all of the. A a mechanical equipment, so it is not visible from outside, this would include any any uh, generators that we have to have. And they're able to be basically disguised completely from the public view and there's enough room for them.
So that's not enough mechanical units to support the number of units you have.
Yes.
And. Now I want you to talk about the terrace and why there is a terrace and all of the aspects of it. As opposed to the mechanicals, which do need to be placed somewhere, because they won't fit where you've got them.
Well.
For retail and put those units in the front, they're not mechanicals.
VRF units with with will fit on that side.
No.
We have, we're doing an eleven story building, the same ratio. And the same amount of roof, and those units do fit there.
Okay, so this is a conceptual drawing, basically, let's keep it that.
No, these these, there's, there is enough room, I just stood there, I will just say, there is enough room for the mechanical equipment through all of the apartments. Uh, to to be located on that, in that spot.
It's just not on the plans.
These little boxes are mechanical.
They go about forty. Yeah, you you haven't shown us on the plans.
There's only about forty boxes in it.
Yes, VRF units don't need to be one per unit.
And retail, yeah. Okay, that's gonna be interesting to sell too, okay.
So what is access to the roof terrace?
The the roof terrace is only accessed from the three apartments that are directly underneath it. Because we really can't, we don't want to make the building taller and provide egress and elevator elevator access there.
So. Wow. And will there be any structures there?
Without, I'm sorry, access to the roof, how do you? I'm sorry, can I get that again, um, everybody was asking the question. So you have to, if if you don't have elevator access to the roof, access is from the three apartments, you said?
No, for the roof terrace.
Wow.
So if you have to do a major repair, the tenant has to allow access to their apartment?
No.
Okay.
Sorry.
It's a roof terrace, it's just the roof terrace area, it's not the mechanicals.
The mechanical area.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Am I correct?
I was, I was confusing them.
So the access to the mechanical area is through.
Through the stair and the the top, you know, trap door on the top of the elevator.
Okay.
Sorry.
A trap door on the top of elevators to get larger pieces of equipment in it.
I'm I'm not saying.
What's that?
I cut you off. I'm not saying how to get the access to roof terrace. Uh, I mean, like you said, it's from the three units, but. How do you get there, there's no doors shown here.
Pull downstairs and hold a martini box.
Are there any instructions on roof terrace to create product?
I don't, I think it's it's a sort of place that you go if you want to, we we all know this is another thing that people are very fond of, having, be able to say they have access to some. Roof terrace, and we will have a spiral stair out of the, you know, three spiral stairs out of those units to get up there.
So it's an amenity for the three head houses.
I I just had a question regarding the the plan that was originally uh, submitted in the plan that you're showing here. The the width of the mechanical area of the terrace is much wider. Uh, are you decreasing the angle of the roof, or? I I'm just wondering why there's such a difference? I think we have. But it it's hard to say, I mean, this was the first time we're seeing that plan, but I'm looking at the plan that were submitted previously, and there's a clear difference in those dimensions. I'm wondering why, what are our hours being achieved with the roof line or?
We've just been more careful in the in the way that we've we've drawn that based on the actual sections.
The beneficial side effect of gambol roofing is exactly that, it gives you the option to have a more vertical wall. As part of the, you know, the first part of the roof, to have the curve. Um, be pretty vertical over the the face. And and the end result is you give the benefit of of a larger.
Yeah.
Top of the roof, let's say, and you're apparently leveraging that, so.
Yeah, well, I would actually say that we are doing that, that is exactly, what we're showing is something steep, it's the bottom half of the gambol.
Yeah.
And we're just not doing the invisible part.
There, yeah, from the street's invisible, but, I mean.
It it, that's a, that's an aesthetic thing then, but I think the street, the 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 gables that are shown on the street. Are different, have a different angle than the than that.
I was in shit. I, you really need. You really need to think about that.
Um, what? Now, this this is gonna go on, you know, it's like, there's lots of problems.
Sorry. There are a number of architectural questions that are gonna be related to fire safety and. You know, we we do need to continue. And I think. So therefore, this, I mean, John, you know.
Yeah, well, unfortunately, the laptop died.
Background.
So I I don't know where to.
I think that became a natural break.
I don't think we made that to natural break.
Okay. Um, now, you mentioned something about availability.
Yeah, so we uh we actually are not available on the fourteenth, next meeting date is the twenty eighth. I understand Mr. Troutman. Uh, is also available that night, so we'd like to pick back up again on the twenty eighth of March.
Every ten, all the questions you asked.
Oh, yeah, you'll you'll give us an extension at time to act again at the month of March?
Uh, yes.
Okay, you just shoot a one liner.
I'll shoot a one liner.
And then if we're going to the twenty eight.
I'll I'll actually make it the end of April.
Yeah.
There you go.
So.
And for the benefit of the public, this matter is going to be carried without further notice to the March twenty eighth. Twenty twenty four, meeting seven thirty PM, at the same room.
Very good. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate the times.
Thank you.
I have one question. I think there's a question that's pending, perhaps matters, so let's say.
Steve, can we actually go to the jet executives?
No. You're still carrying on business, so if everybody can please file out quietly or stay if you want. But we're still trying to do a little bit more business with the board. Right. Yeah, we're just up for the record, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
To respond to the inquiry by or a vice chair.
That's right.
Harrowitz, uh, the um, the Equinix matter. Uh, that is a pending application, it's an extension of time to act from February twenty nine, twenty twenty four. Denise is going to contact them immediately to find out whether they are uh either going to. Further extend our time to act beyond the end of February or alternatively to withdraw. Whether without prejudice their application or what their intention is. Uh, and I'll work with her in that regard and we'll report back.
Yeah. That's why I asked about two weeks.
If they're if they're not going to extend the time to act, they're gonna they're gonna withdraw with without prejudice.
Or that or they might say they have an automatic approval.
Yeah, that's right. They're not they're not going to say they have an automatic approval because if they uh if they don't extend the time to act. Uh, uh, then then uh we can we can have the board. Uh, have a special meeting and discuss without prejudice their application.
But it's it's funny.
Or with prejudice.
We don't have a whole lot of time, so we gotta get going on this.
We have we. And finally, have to notice. That's notice, forty eight hours.
Why don't we have a resolution to say what we intend, what the possibilities are?
We can have, uh, right now, if the board wishes, we can have a verbal resolution that in the event the applicant. Uh, does not extend time to act beyond February twenty nine, twenty twenty four, at least through two and including our next meeting thereafter. Uh, then this board uh will deem the application uh withdrawn, well dismissed without prejudice. Or it would be denied? There are options, I I I um, it's not my motion to make, I threw one out there for you if you wanted it. A dismissal without prejudice, I believe, is what's.
But it's.
Satisfy the concern.
Is the dismissal artful or their fault?
A dismissal is artful, withdrawal is their.
Okay, so we have four surviving. So we can provide for dismissal.
Without prejudice or with prejudice, but I would I would recommend without prejudice. Uh, in the event, uh, they do not extend the time to act or at least our next meeting. And they have to and they have to do so prior uh on or before February twenty nine.
Mr. Harrowitz, just make that one.
I did, I'll second it. Have a good, uh, since it's a verbal resolution, we'll do a roll call.
Is it only for the eligible? Uh, there are only four eligible.
No. Well, uh, this is on the on the extension, so other than is anybody refused on that? No, so everybody can vote. This is this is just on whether or not to extend, it's a procedural. It's a procedural vote, it's not a substantive vote.
Steve, the real voters.
They're gonna be hearing, they're they're gonna be potentially involved.
Whatever you say, well.
I appreciate it. The short answer, take your vote.
You want to vote, what you want to uh a roll call?
Roll call, please.
Okay, and just before, it was Mr. Harrowitz that made the motion and Mr. Queen that second?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. uh, Mr. Gart- Ms. Gardner?
Yes.
Ms. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Harrowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Queen?
Yes.
Mr. Simo?
Yes.
Mr. Walden?
Yes.
And Mr. Zazarino?
Yes.
Was Jack supposed to do any response to that email? They're transmittal. Can you just look at it again and see?
I'll I'll just, yeah, I don't know if Jack was supposed to or not. But we have a resolution now in place, thank you for the contingency.
Okay, so they're showing up in. Four weeks, correct?
It was just.
Twenty eight.
Yeah.
So are we? And Jay's gonna, he'll he'll be here the twenty eighth with whatever. What, um, is there anything for the? We need to to discuss anything the next week, Denise?
Tending after we anticipate having anything uh for the next week.
I mean, obviously.
I just have to check the calendar. As to when. The um.
That that is why.
Yeah.
And in theory, could that end up being on the fourteen?
My rec video would be.
No, don't do anything.
Cancel, don't cancel yet.
Right. No, 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 I I wouldn't.
Just as a clarification, I know I'm going to be out west again that week. Uh, I did we change, so we can no longer attend virtually as they turn?
You can attend, but you can't vote, you can't participate. But if we're not voting that day and you certify that you were on the the live stream. Then you can pick up the next week, like you did this week.
Yeah, you don't have to be watching. So you have to have a little. Central questions.
If you're uh, if you're not. That evening, uh, you can still ask a question. Like it's the last question, yeah.
I thought you couldn't.
Oh.
How?
Are we gonna do what we did with, I mean, did it once to do that, Joe?
But you can't do that on YouTube, that's the problem, not soon.
Oh, I'm sorry, it it can't, technologically, you can't do it, never mind.
Well, we did, we did have pseudo hybrid, we had we had a a private Zoom.
Yeah.
I think the job.
It's okay.
And and that allowed Jeff to participate.
That wasn't on a matter, that was on the administrative, um, reorganization.
Reorganization, yeah.
That's fine, I I'm certain this will include one meeting more. I can send Jeff any questions that I have that are burning, I'm certain the team will ask them and then I'll just take it back. All right, you done? You drop it down?